Welcome everyone to our Provo Municipal Council meeting this evening. It is Tuesday, December 13th and it is 5:35 PM 2022. Meetings of the municipal council are being held in hybrid fashion. Members of the public can view council meetings on YouTube and Facebook, or they may attend in person here in the council chambers at the Provo City Center. I will remind participants to mute your microphone when not speaking to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up. My name is George Hanley. I'm council chair. I'm joined on the stand by councillors, Vice Chair councillor McKay, councillor Whipple, councillor Shipley, councillor Hoban, councillor Ellsworth and councillor Fillmore, Mayor Michelle Kafusi and Wayne Parker, our Chief Administrative Officer from the administration are here with us and also Brian Jones is on the stand, our city attorney. We excuse Justin Harrison, our executive director, who's out ill today but is joining us on Zoom. The opening prayer will be provided by Glenn Hatch, after which we'll have the presentation of the colors.
Should I use this?
Yes, please. Thank you. And make sure the microphone is on. Maybe, there we go.
Yeah. Our dear Father in heaven, we come before thee this night to thank thee for all the many blessings that thou pour out upon each of us and our dear family and loved ones. Father, it's hard to explain how much we do love thee because thou hast been so good to us. But we pray that thou continue to be with us in all that we do so that we can receive the further blessings that thou have in store for us. We're grateful also for thy son, Jesus Christ, who we know is the Savior of the world. And Father, we pray thou bless us tonight in this very important meeting that we'll be able to learn things that will be of much value to each of us and to the city itself. And we pray that thou continue to protect each of us. We're in the last days. Everyone doesn't understand that, but many do. And we're in the last days and more and more wickedness and evil is starting to spread throughout the nation. And we pray that thou will protect us and bless us, Father. And we we promise that we are going to follow thee and do the things that thou ask us to do. And we say these things humbly and do it in the name of thy beloved son, Jesus Christ, the Savior of the world. Amen.
Yeah, thank you. The Provo Police and Fire Department will present the colors, after which the pledge of allegiance will be provided by councillor Fillmore.
Ready, halt. Left, face. Present, arms.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, halt. Order, arms. Honor guard, dismiss.
Thank you so much for being here tonight and thank you for that wonderful presentation of the colors. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all those who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments on any items, again, on any matter that is not on our agenda this evening are invited now to approach the podium. Those participating on Zoom will need to use the raise hand function to indicate that they wish to comment. I may end up alternating between in-person and online commenters as may be necessary. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence and you will have two minutes to speak. Please come forward if you have any comments tonight on any matter that is not on the agenda. All right, seeing no comments. And I do not see, let's see, not see any online. So we will begin with item number one on our agenda, which is a presentation recognizing the Provology Fall 2022 graduating class. This will be presented by Dixon Holmes, our Assistant Chief Administrative Officer.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, council members, Mayor Kafusi. We were trying to remember which, how long we've been doing this. I think it's been seven years, but our 11th class because of COVID and some others. But so we'd just like to present their names and then we would invite them to come up and to have a picture with the council, with the mayor. And let me just, I'll read the first one and then they'll just read the names of the others. So this is Provology. A nomination of the graduate council of the city of Provo, having demonstrated ability by collaborative participation in Provo City and its many functions, award the degree of PhD, Provo honorary degree. With all the rights and privileges therein too pertaining, given at the Provo City Center, this 11th graduating class 2022. So I'd like to invite Abinadi Borha up and his good wife Sarah Borha. Riley Pancrits, stay here, we're gonna have a picture here. Herbert Stoddard and his wife Patricia. Ann Woodbury. Andrew Greer. Tracy Rock. Jacob Slegel. And Andrew Ortonis. And just for the benefit of the audience, our participants have been participating for the last 11 weeks, hearing from our various city departments and divisions. We met on Wednesday evening from 6:30 to 9:00. We toured the sewer treatment plant, went to fire station two. We toured this facility, parks and recreation, the airport, many of our facilities and we congratulate them. And we would invite any in the audience this evening. If you go to provo.org and look for Provology, we'll be starting a class again in February through the middle of May. So if we could, if we could have our class come here and if the council...
We have some applause, yes.
Fifth floor, yeah, just...
All right, Mr. Holmes is going to present our second agenda item, which is a public service announcement from Provo School District's Center for Advanced Professional Studies, CAPS, on water conservation.
So this evening, we have two Timpview High School students with us tonight, Daniel Nevers and Loret Caravantes, who prepared a public service announcement for us. This is not the first one that the school district, school district has a program called CAPS, the Center for Advanced Professional Studies. It's a little bit of an externship, but these two students have been working really hard with our media services, our PIO and particularly the water department to produce this film. But I'm gonna let them come up real quickly and just kind of take a second to describe what they did and then we have a short video and then if you have any questions to them, so.
Okay, well, I'm Daniel.
And I'm Loret.
So we're both seniors at Timpview High School. We're at the CAPS program down there, right just down the street at New Skin. And we're super glad to be with you guys.
Yeah, it was a really great experience working with Dixon and like other, his crews and like Provo Water. There's also lots of fun learning about like the water conservation around here in Provo. And so we hope you guys enjoy the video we made. It was really fun making. It's a little funny, so we try to like not make it boring. So I hope you guys enjoy it.
Thank you, Provo. From this year to last, you have saved over 700 million gallons of water. Let's keep up the good effort in water conservation.
That's enough to water a herd of 45 thirsty elephants for 19 centuries. Or if you put that much into milk gallons, it will be tall enough to go to Sputnik in back 107 times.
Conserving water is hard, but we're doing well. This drought has been affecting us for 20 years, which is also how long The Bachelor's been on TV. And just like Provo's doing their part, so are you. Speaking of this topic, people doing their part for the earth has always been something I look for in a woman.
Oh, sure.
Irene, have you been conserving water like I asked you to?
To be honest, I haven't been as good as you wanted me to be, but I promise I'll get better. I promise.
Irene, you said that last time. I don't think this is gonna work. I'm sorry, Irene. I'm sorry.
There are many ways to save water throughout the year. You could change your planting beds to a drip system. You could check for leaks in your house and yard often. These leaks cause thousands of gallons of water to be wasted. Next, you could even plant native shade trees, which will reduce the amount of water needed. Now remember, the little things do make a difference. Let's help get out of this drought by doing the small things.
On behalf of Provo City, thank you, Provo, for your help. We are constantly working on new ways to help us get through this drought. Thank you for your efforts and let's keep doing an amazing job.
All right, any questions for our students from council? Mr. Hoban?
Yeah, just say, "Good job." It was entertaining and I think it'll catch people's attention and appreciate the effort you put into that and it's a good cause.
Thank you.
I'm curious why this topic came to your mind.
You know, I guess every year when we do one of these, Dixon goes to Provo City and asks, "What's something that the residents need to hear?" So this year, water conservation. I think everybody, everybody knows.
Hey, great, thanks. Go ahead, councillor Ellsworth.
You have a big audience in the room. What do you want them to know about water conservation?
That they're doing a great job.
Yeah. What do you do at home to conserve water?
All the simple stuff, you know, just keeping, keeping it at the top of your mind. Just, everything helps.
Yeah, no wasting water.
Great. Well, thank you so much for caring and thanks so much for coming tonight and presenting on it. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll turn to item number three on our agenda, which is a, an implied motion on a resolution consenting to the mayor's appointment of the chief of police for Provo City. Mayor Kafusi will present.
Good evening, Council Chair Hanley and Vice Chair McKay and council members. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you. As the community's public figure for safety, a police chief sets the tone not only for a department but for the entire city. To continue our high community safety standards, it is important to find a chief who is not only prepared to protect, but is also passionate about Provo. In turn, Chief Troy Beebe has worked for Provo City for 24 years. He has proven his ability and desire to protect our community in what he affectionately calls the Provo Way, which for him means ethically protecting our community with compassion, respect and selflessness, and I couldn't agree more. It is my honor to present Acting Chief Troy Beebe for your advice and consent as Provo's new police chief.
All right, so now we do the vote and then, okay. I haven't done this for a while, so I wasn't, thank you. Okay, well, we'll very proudly call for a vote on this item. I will do this by roll call. I'll begin with councillor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Councillor Fillmore?
Yes.
I, George Hanley, will vote yes. Councillor Hoban, enthusiastically, yes. Councillor McKay?
Yes.
Councillor Shipley?
Yes.
And councillor Whipple?
Yes.
That vote is unanimous. Mayor?
Thank you so much for your full support. And we thought, because this is such a great opportunity in a public meeting, we've invited the, his family, his friends, former police chiefs, the police department, and we asked if Judge Romney would come and do his swearing in in this public setting. So if you're okay with that, we'll go ahead and do that right now. Okay, just a little more, because this is just such a big deal for us. I asked Chief Beebe this morning when we met if he would be willing to just say a few remarks, so.
I was gonna ask if you didn't, so.
Mayor, Council, Seattle Parker. I'm humbled and honored to be in this position. I've worn this patch for some time and worked with the best this profession has to offer. We will continue to serve our mission, which is working with the public and improving quality of life. We'll be relentless on finding those who perpetrate and commit crimes. I've made it a statement that we do that in the Provo way. Which is difficult to explain in just a few words. In our mission statement, it is a a professional proactive policing service with compassion. I see that daily in the acts that these men and women commit in service to the community. I'm extremely proud of them and the things that they do. And I'm extremely proud to serve them and the citizens of Provo. I'm very grateful for your trust. I also want to say thank you to my family for supporting me. My daughter gives me notes of confidence and sneaks them to me often. My son, who wears a different patch, but the same badge of trust in a Spanish fork. Proud of him. And I'm very proud of my wife. Thankful for her support, the guidance that she gives me. Thank you very much for this privilege.
We just wanted to recognize his amazing wife, Teresa, with some flowers, and then his mother is here, so stand up, mama. Okay, at this point, we have a reception set up for Chief Beebe and his, his company and visitors. So we'll go ahead and get out of your way so you can continue on with the city business. And the reception is just out the door and in the community room. So thank you.
No picture?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we should for sure. Yeah, let's do a picture.
Yeah. And before you leave the room, Chief Beebe, thank you. We, on behalf of the entire council, were very grateful that you are willing and able to serve and that you were, we know you come very loved by your, your officers, so thank you. All right. We will. Thank you, everybody. If we could begin our reconvene here.
Good luck, George.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna begin the meeting. We would request that people keep it down a little bit so we can continue our meeting. Thank you so much. We, we have a very full agenda tonight, so we've got a lot to get through. Thank you so much. All right, we'll return to our agenda and let's see, where are we? Number, item number four has been continued, so we'll go to item number five, which is a presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report presented by John Borget, it looks like. Yes, hi, John, Director of Administrative Services, and Kelsey Zarbuck, Budget Officer.
Yes, thank you, Chair Hanley and the Honorable Counsel. It's my honor to bring to you our annual financial report. I just want to mention a couple of things. I want to give a special thanks to our finance division. Kelsey Zarbuck, who is our Controller and Budget Officer, worked daily with the auditors and did an amazing job working on the audit and our, our annual report. Also want to give a special thanks to Dan Followed, our Finance Division Director, who was very involved, as well as Anisa Orwin and Crystal Howard, who just left the city, but she, she did an amazing job as well on the, on the preparing our report. I want to also mention that, I want to also give a special thanks to administration, as well as the department directors and employees. This really does, is a citywide effort, and many people contributed, and we want to thank them for their contributions. I want to also mention to the public and the council that our report, this report is available online. If you log on to provo.org and then go into the Finance Department and then Reports, you'll see this report listed there, and public's all aware of it and available, able to access it. We'll mention this, a hundred and forty-three page report, and so if you love finance and finance reports, you'll really like this report. But one of the things that I really wanted to do is just talk specifically about some certain areas of the report and some things that, that I felt like would interest the council and be helpful for the public. I, my primary focus will be on the general fund and also fund balance. But Jeff Miles will be following me up. He's with our independent auditor, and he will be focusing on the, the opinion as well as the entity-wide statements for the city. And so that's kind of the approach we'll be following, so see if I can make this work here. Here we go. So I've highlighted a couple of sections that I wanted to touch on. This letter of transmittal is an introductory letter that just gives an overview of the report and provides some important information. And I'm gonna read this for, it says, "State law and local ordinance requires that all general purpose local governments publish within six months of the close of each fiscal year a complete set of financial statements presented in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles and audited in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards by a firm of licensed certified public accountants. In conform with this requirement, we issue the annual comprehensive financial report of the city of Provo for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two." Important thing for the council and administration to understand is that this is management and the council's report. It's not the auditor's report. And this report consists of management's representations concerning the finances of the city of Provo. Management assumes full responsibility for the completeness and reliability of all the information presented in this report. Down towards the bottom, HBME is a firm of licensed certified public accountants selected by the municipal council, has audited the city's financial statements. The goal of this independent audit is to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements of the city of Provo for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two represent an accurate portrayal of the city's financial position in all material respects. Down a little bit lower, it mentions HBME concluded, based upon the audit, that there is reasonable basis for rendering an unmodified opinion and that the city's of Provo's financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth were presented in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. And so that's what we're, what, that's what we always hope for, and that's the purpose of the audit, is that we can share with the public and with you that this audit report is prepared fairly and does represent the city's overall financial position. We go to the next page. Talking a little bit about the economic condition, and this letter is actually written by me and signed by me, and so these are just some general observations, but the local and state economy hasn't been impacted by high inflation rates driven by increased costs of oil and other essential items. And so that's something that does impact our statements. Down a little bit towards lower, it says, "Sales tax revenue of twenty-seven million increased by three-point-two million dollars or thirteen-point-three percent versus the prior year." While the trend from the fiscal twenty-one continued with strong consumer buying, we do not expect to continuously see these kinds of increases long-term. For the first three months of the fiscal year twenty-three, which we're in right now, we're seeing an increase of eight-point-four percent. In the budget, we budgeted for six, and so we're still running ahead of our budget. Those are still very strong, but eight-point-four percent is not, is lower than thirteen-point-three. And so we are starting to see a little bit of leveling, but it's still positive trend. With high inflation and the Fed increasing interest rates and the potential for a recession, the city is closely monitoring the current economic environment. As the city plans for the future, we are being very cautious to align the commitment of city resources with the anticipated revenues for the city. One of the things that's significant, and I'm gonna get down to the next paragraph. For the first time since I've been with the city, grants actually equaled forty-point-eight percent of the total general fund revenues, and that's a very large number. And the reason for that is the American Rescue Act. Amounted to thirty-three-point-nine million dollars, which was a significant amount of money that came in, and I'll be talking about that a little bit more as we talk about the report. Whilst striving to control expenditures, the city is committed to maintaining infrastructure and delivering services at sufficient levels. And so just one of the things that we want to let you know and let the public know is that we do, we don't have unlimited resources, but we do strive to, with the resource that we do have, to maintain our infrastructure. Talking just a little bit about some major initiatives, a couple of things, there's several things that happened this year that were very significant, and we're, most of you are all aware of. The construction of this facility was completed, the Public Safety and New City Hall, and we moved in in July of twenty twenty-two. Also, the completion of an airport terminal in May of twenty-two, and we began scheduled service in July of twenty-two. There's also our My Hometown Initiative that's going on, that the council's been very involved with, and we're right in the middle of that project and having a lot of success. I'd also mention that another significant initiative that's going on is the construction of our wastewater treatment plant. It's in the, right in the middle of that construction, and many things are happening. We anticipate that that will be complete in twenty twenty-four. In this report, in this letter, there's a number of significant events by department. I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna go through those right now, but I would encourage the council and those that read this report to go through and look at the significant things that happened during the fiscal year by each department. It's very informative and provides a lot of information about what's going on with the city. We go to the next section. We're gonna talk a little bit about the an award that we receive. We belong to an organization that's called the the GFOA, or the Governmental Financial Officers Association. We submit our report to them each year, and they go through and review it and critique it, provide constructive criticism and determine whether it meets the, the standards to receive the Award of Excellence. And last year in fiscal twenty-one, we submitted our report, and we did receive that Award of Excellence. And so that just kind of shares with the council and also with the public that we do strive to provide a report that meets all the standards and meets a high level of excellency for those that read it. We go to the next page. This is our balance sheet for the governmental funds, and I mentioned I'm gonna focus on the general fund. And you'll see that we had seventy-three million, six-hundred-and-twenty thousand in fund balance, and we break up fund balance in four different areas. We have non-spendable, which means exactly what it says. It's some money that's in fund balance that if we wanted to go out and spend it tomorrow, we couldn't. And I'm gonna give you an example of what's made up of that balance. In restricted, we have thirty-one million, three-thirty-nine, which means that we're restricted on how we can spend that money by outside agencies, and so there's limitations, and so it's shown as restricted. Then assigned is money that we assign ourselves to be spent in specific ways. And the unassigned is just money that it can be spent however, anyway you want, okay? And so if we go to the next slide, this actually comes out of note fourteen, and I think it's very meaningful and helpful, and you'll see that up on top, that speaks, the non-spendable portion is made up of inventory, deposits, and then a significant amount for interfund loan. That interfund loan is a loan that was made for golf course improvements, and the plan and intention of paying that loan back was to pay it back with tax increment from a housing development project that's gonna go adjacent to the new medical school that's being built down there. It's taken a little longer than we anticipated, but there still is a hope and a belief that that will be constructed. We'll be able to repay that back over time. That money was borrowed from our Mountain Vista Fund that actually rolls up into the general fund. And the hope and plan is that it'll be repaid, but as you're aware, that money right now, we're waiting for that project to happen, and so it's non-spendable. Part of fund balance, I mean, we hope and anticipate that it'll come, but it's non-spendable right now. In the restricted category, you can see that we have road projects. When we, when we receive money from the state for BNC or for road projects, money that we spend on our, on our roads within the city, it's restricted and can be only used for that purpose, and that, there's seven-point-two million in that, which is- It's restricted and can it can be only used for that purpose and that there's seven point two million in that, which is also part of the general fund. And then the big item, uh, ARPA, yeah, ARPA, we've got twenty three million, three, one, four, two, two, nine that we've received. Uh, for ARPA funding and we plan on spending that on water and wastewater projects. And it's restricted and can only be used for those specific purposes. So it's listed there. And then I'm going to make more discussion in a few minutes, but our disaster recovery fund. Last year, we set aside four hundred and eighty six thousand, a little less than that because that includes interest, but that's sitting there as a restricted. Use that can only be used if we have in a disastrous type of event that qualifies to the state and to the federal government. And then on our sign. These, all these numbers listed down through here are basically items that were carried over. These were presented to the council in September. And they were carried over into fiscal twenty three. And then down on the bottom, we also have some ARPA funds of ten million down below. And as you're probably aware, our revenue loss portion that we. Were able to claim on ARPA, that money is not restricted for a specific purpose. And so therefore we're showing it as a sign. Based on how we determine we're going to spend it and it's not shown as restricted. And then down at the bottom is our twenty four million, eight ninety four, which is the un-unassigned, which we can be spent on. The purposes that the city decides they would like to. So that just gives you a good breakdown on. How and what's made up of the general funds fund balance. Now, if we go to the next slide. Um. One of the things that the state uh, has. Told us and is 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 actually basically by state legislation that we're limited on how much. Fund balance we can have in the city. And at one time it was eighteen percent of of revenues. Right now it went to twenty five and now it's thirty five percent. And as you look at the audited twenty twenty two statement, we are now at thirty four point two percent. Last year we were thirty and so it increased fairly significantly. Uh. You can see that revenues went up from sixty six million all the way up to a hundred and four. And one of the reasons that for the big jump is that we have approximately thirty four million in ARPA funds that we received. And so that was a big bump. And then you can also see our assigned and unassigned. Went from twenty three million all the way up to forty. And so when we made a presentation yesterday to the audit committee, uh. Uh, Councilman Shipley asked if I would provide another column that would show just so it's for comparison purposes, what it would have looked like if ARPA wasn't included. And so you can see that our revenues up at the top would have went from sixty six million to seventy million, two fifty. Uh, and our uh, total revenues and transfer would have went from seventy eight to eighty three. I ran a comparison and the going from the seventy eight, nine eighty eight to the eighty three, five thirty one. Our overall revenues went up by five point seven five percent. Which is, which is a healthy, good increase, but it's it's not a crazy increase and it kind of. Better easier explains it. The other thing that's kind of interesting is that then if you pulled out. The the uh, ARPA funds in the unassigned fund balance, the ten million. Uh, that would have shown that our overall percentage. To the total, we would have actually been thirty six percent of of revenues, which would have put us slightly over the state limit. But the number that the state looks at and there was like that's thirty four point two percent. So that just kind of provides you what it would have looked like had they not been there. In our disaster recovery fund. Uh, we have already moved into uh. The restricted fund balance and made the deposit into our disaster recovery fund. State pool account, three hundred and twenty two thousand, three thirty six. And this came from the carryover that was approved or we reviewed with the council. And basically what it states is that we will take twenty percent of the uh. Amount of money that's dropped to fund balance after we set aside money for our innovation fund and our employee recognition. And so that amount equaled three hundred and twenty two thousand, three thirty six. So that's been done. There's a second portion. That the council has asked us to follow or to look at, and that is it will take ten percent of the net. Change in fund balance. Okay? And so right now our net change, and if we go to the next page. Uh, you'll see that it's forty one million, five sixty five, seven forty three. Okay? So if I go back. To here. Uh, the first thing that I. Felt like we really needed to do was. Back out the ARPA revenue because that's. That's federal dollars that's restricted and it wouldn't make sense to to use that in the calculation. So I backed that out. I also backed out the B and C revenues, which are restricted specifically for road projects. And then. We had actually spent some of the ARPA funds, four hundred and eighty nine. So I added that because that's. That way it kind of shows the net there and then the same thing with B and C. So by doing that, that gives you an adjusted net change of six million, thirty three, five, one, five. And based on the ten percent uh. Formula, then that would put six hundred and three thousand, three hundred and fifty two dollars into. The disaster recovery. So between that and the amount uh, of three twenty two, you would be. Roughly nine hundred and twenty five thousand that would go into the disaster recovery fund. So we can talk about that in a minute, but. We want, I just wanted to touch base before we. Move that six hundred and three, we wanted to kind of talk to the council and see if you were supportive and see where we wanted to go. And so. When I get through, we can talk about that and make that decision. Okay? Uh. So another thing that's kind of interesting to look at is if we look at how our general fund revenues. Compared to the budget, we were up forty million, six oh three. And we hadn't, we did not budget for the ARPA revenues. So that's thirty three million, eight eighty, and then sales tax was up three point. Two million roughly. And then we had some about Mountain Vista land sales that took place and some collections of about one point two. And so. At thirty eight point two four seven gives you a pretty good general indication of why revenues were up so much. Okay. I thought this would be helpful. This is included in the quarterly report when when we provide it to you, but this just kind of shows. How much money was appropriated during the year out of fund balance. So it just kind of has a listing there. And provides you the purpose and use for those. And so roughly about two point six million was was appropriated out of fund balance. This shows you kind of the Provo City Disaster Recovery Fund. Uh, and last year our carryover portion was two hundred and thirty four, three ninety three. The uh, net change in fund balance, two fifty, four sixty four. And then there was fifteen hundred and sixty dollars in interest. And then that put us at four eighty six, four one seven. And then we've already deposited the three twenty two, three thirty six. And we've already received interest this year of six million. And then if we were to add the uh, six hundred thousand, then you'd be about one point four, a little over one point four million. In the disaster recovery fund. Well. Let's see here. Okay? I think I feel like this slide is very helpful. This kind of shows what happened to Long Dad. This is note eight. And as you can see, uh, in our uh, we'll get to the right page here in just a second. Okay? That there's a couple of items that are highlighted. The first GO refunding bond series two thousand seventeen is the rec center. You can see that we had about a twenty four, five fifty, and we're now paid it down. To twenty two, seven ninety roughly. And then the second highlighted section is the facilities bond for this facility. And also for our fire station on Canyon Road. It was at sixty one, four forty five, and we brought it down to fifty nine million. Uh. And so overall, if you look at governmental activities, uh, our, we started at about a hundred and twenty five million and we paid down about a net. Of ten million. And so that we brought it down to about a hundred and fourteen, eight oh five. If you look at the business type activities, um, the most significant thing that happened is with our wastewater treatment plant, um, we. As you're aware, I borrowed some money through the state. For a half a percent interest. And then what we're doing, which is uh, really nice is that as we utilize that money, we draw money from the state and reimburse ourselves for our expenses. And so we only have to pay interest on the outstanding balance. Uh. Currently, we have roughly an eighty six million dollar. Loan with seven million that's non-forgivable. So we have an eighty six million dollar potential balance. So right now. At the end of the year, we're at forty two. And so we're almost halfway. Spending that balance that's going to be used for that new facility. And so there was an overall net increase. Uh, of twenty seven million mainly coming from that wat- water treatment plant. And then we paid the other items down. Because that just kind of gives you a general picture of what's happening with the uh, business type activities and with that uh, water treatment plant note. Uh. If we. Go to the next page, um, we have a specific note, note twenty, which refers to federal funding related to COVID nineteen. And once again, this is all based as of June thirtieth, but it says. As of June thirtieth, all revenue have been recognized in the general fund, which is why we had the huge amount of revenue during this year. And five hundred and sixty six thousand had been appropriated. And four hundred and eighty nine had been spent. And as it shows down on the second table, uh. We had some positions that were eliminated during COVID. And we brought some of those positions back and they qualified. Under ARPA. And so we budgeted for that in twenty two. We also budgeted for some in twenty three, as well as some baby behavior wellness expenses that qualified. So it's down at the bottom, it says as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, thirty three million, three, one, four, two, twenty nine had not yet been officially appropriated. However, during fiscal twenty two. Audit preparations, the city allocated the remaining funds in fiscal year twenty three. And as you're aware of, that just happened. Within the very recent past. And so right now we know exactly where all those funds are going to be spent. And then it just mentions here that we have the twenty three million, three, one, four, for uh. Uh, that's restricted specifically for the water projects. And then the ten million is for primarily the uh. Um, multi-sports park and the redevelopment of this block. And so. And then we have a new note that was required this year by the state auditor's office. I want to just talk about briefly. And it's basically referred to tax abatements. And we actually had Keith discussing, he's gonna discuss a little later on tonight. These arrangements. And so what's kind of unique is. There was legislation. Within the last year or two that doesn't allow these types of agreements. New new agreements to come on, but existing agreements were grandfathered in. And so the state auditor office just requested and wanted to be able to have a note that showed those things are happening. This is total. What was paid during the year, also what was paid prior to the this fiscal year and then uh, the expiration date and the potential balances that each has. And so. With that, uh. Any questions? And I would be, I would really love some feedback on the direction that the council would like me to go with on this. Second portion for the uh. Uh, for the disaster recovery fund.
Thank you, Mr. Borget. That was wonderful report. Thoughts, feedback? Mr. Shipley?
Uh, thank you. I I think uh. Just a general comment first that I'm I'm really grateful, obviously, in in light of what we've been going through the past few years that. Uh, that revenues to the city have been so positive and that things have been so good. Um, I think. Um, part of my desire for us to continue both sides of the disaster recovery fund is is in part because we're going through this. These years of bounty, and I feel like it's an opportunity for us to. To carve something out and create a legacy for the future. And fund things during times when we can, you know, and I I. I guess I'm I'm confident that there will be years that we that this won't get funded or it won't get funded very well. I also, uh, I guess my my end game goal for this type of fund, I'll just. State my opinion on this and and obviously it's not the opinion of the council, but one of my. Directions for this is is to create kind of a uh, an endowment of sorts for emergency preparedness for the city of Provo, meaning. If if the state allows us to take ten percent from this a year in emergency preparedness preparation. Uh, funding, uh, you know, that we can take that out even independent of a of a disaster. My thought is, is if we're getting three percent off PTF, which is which is probably the long-term average, and that's we're probably about there.
We are about there, yeah.
Yeah. So if we get about three percent and and let's say we create an account with two and a half to three million dollars, and that gives us. You know, approximately seventy to a hundred thousand dollars a year in just interest. That could be a boon to, you know, our our just some preparation each year, you know, and and put kind of a. Uh, uh, again, an endowment together for our emergency preparation in the city. I think that's a that's a really good goal for this. I I don't know that we'll use the account, uh, you know, in full anytime soon, but I'm but I'm really proud of the city for accomplishing this. I know that there have been comments in the past that the state didn't require this, the state didn't anticipate us doing this, the other cities haven't done this. I. I don't, I don't care. I I'm really proud of us for doing this and and I think it's a really important part of the puzzle. Uh, I'm glad that we're close to our thirty five percent cap, you know, on on our on what we can do for a general fund, but I also. I'm really excited about the fact that this has some seed funding in it as well. So my my own personal opinion would be to to continue with both sides of the funding. Uh, until we get to kind of a critical mass in this account, for me, that's, you know. Three to five million dollars that can create an ongoing legacy of preparation on an ongoing basis, just from the interest from it.
Comments from the council, especially with regard to this question?
Um, I agree with Counselor Shipley.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Thank you, John, and thank you, Kelsey, and everyone on your team. Um, this is comprehensive as. As it says, but um, yeah, I agree with Counselor Shipley. I think we should keep moving forward and and prepare for a day when we don't have these kinds of. Um, opportunities within the budget because certainly that will come.
I'll throw my vote behind what Mr. Shipley said. I think. Do we need a vote on that? Do you need a motion on that?
I think that's all we need. If if we have the majority and I have not hear any negatives, we'll we'll get that money moved uh, within the week.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm going to now turn the time over to Jeff Miles, our independent auditor. And so thank you very much.
Thank you, John, real quick.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Shipley has. On a related topic, but I just think it's such an important point that we're finally getting interest on our money as a city. So for for a few years here, we we, you know, these balances sit, these millions of dollars and don't create any. Revenue or interest for an entity like ours, but. We're finally getting to a point where and we're at a point where these millions of dollars that sit in general fund that sit in these different, even the assigned balances, right, that that we.
That's right.
Balances, we can't use them. For, you know, spending, but they actually accomplish something for the city in that they create pretty substantial revenue now in interest.
Yeah, thank you. I agree completely. Any other questions for me?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be with you here tonight. Uh, I think John did a great job with the financial overview, so I don't really plan on. Talking about anything else really financially related this evening. We had a great discussion with the audit committee yesterday where we kind of. Uh, went through the financial statements in a little more uh, detail. Uh, but just we'll share our audit report with you, which is on page twenty of the document or. Probably about page twenty two of PDF or you can just click on it right there. Perfect. So as as John said, this document belongs to the city. The only thing that we. Put in this document is our actual audit opinion, uh, which this actually format changed this year. The opinion needs to be kind of hidden. Halfway down and now they just put it right at the top of it. And I'll just read it to you briefly. We have audited the financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund. And the aggregate remaining fund information of Provo City Corporation as of for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty two. And the related notes to the financial statements, which collectively comprise the city's basic financial statements as listed in the table of contents. In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund. And the aggregate remaining fund information or Provo City Corporation as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty two. And the respective changes in financial position and where applicable. Cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with the county principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So we're issuing a clean opinion on the financial statements of the city. Um. We will be issuing two other, I guess probably three other reports at a later date, uh, related to state compliance, internal controls and also. Uh, what's called the single audit over federal federal awards. Uh, we've we've completed the state compliance section, but we tend to issue it in a in a packet with the single audit and just. So it's known now, we didn't find any any findings with uh, state compliance during our audit. And additionally, we don't have any. Uh, deficiencies in internal control that we feel need to be communicated to. Uh, city council. So we commend the finance department of Provo. uh, city council. So we commend the finance department of Provo City. We feel they do a great job, feel like they're very transparent with, with, uh, council and with us. And they do a great job to make the audit as, as seamless as possible. So we thank them for that. I guess open it to council if they have any questions with respect to the audit.
Thank you. Any questions about the audit? All right, see, there's no questions. So thank you. All right, is that the end of that item, uh, Mr. Borget? Is there anything else that needs to be presented? Okay. Thank you so much for all that information. Appreciate everybody's hustle on, on the agenda tonight. We have fifteen items, so we're, we're gonna try to get through them uh, before the end of the evening. Uh, we'll turn to item number six, which is an implied motion on a resolution adopting the twenty twenty three council regular meeting schedule. Elizabeth Vanderwork and we'll present our office manager.
Good evening, council members. Um, so we have brought for your approval this evening our, um, proposed meeting schedule for twenty twenty three. Um, just a few things to note, um, we've consulted with the planning commission and kind of staggered our schedules so that we don't have those meetings following the same week as there's typically um, a lot of staff involvement and public interest in those meetings. Additionally, um, we've scheduled around major holidays, um, and then uh, the Provo School District spring break. So you'll see that's why the April meeting, there's just one on April eighteenth. Um, the items in, let's see, so there's in August and November are the municipal primary and general elections. And so for each of those elections, um, the city council and mayor sit as the board of canvassers to certify the election results. And so those meetings are scheduled for fourteen days following the election. Um, and then as you can see in May and June, we've scheduled a few budget meetings as needed, and as we approach those dates, we'll determine with um, council leadership whether or not those will be held. So, um, I guess we'd invite any, if there's any questions or comments, um, Counselor Ellsworth had shared some comments via email regarding the November schedule and whether we could, um, maybe consolidate one of the regular meetings with the board of canvassers. Um, Brian Jones offered some counsel on the timing and logistics of that. So it sounds like the board of canvassers due to um, overseas ballots and the timeline prescribed by state code for allowing those to be returned and counted um, kind of dictates that we do need to have that board of canvassers meeting on the date in question. Um, but there is that option if council members would rather, uh, we could consolidate and move the working council meeting from November twenty eighth to the twenty first. Um, November twenty first is the week of Thanksgiving, so that, that was why we had separated them out, but just so you're aware of that. Subtext.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yeah, no offense to my esteemed colleagues, but I didn't want to meet three times in November. It's a very busy time of year as we've all just experienced. And so my preference would be that we delete the November twenty eighth meeting and consolidate that into the meeting of the twenty first. And at that point, staff can kind of massage the agenda items and maybe it's a lighter meeting that week or something, but I would hate to ask myself and my six colleagues to show up on the twenty first, which is two days before Thanksgiving, and then again, the Tuesday right after Thanksgiving. It, it just doesn't sound great.
One additional consideration is, um, in both November and December, there's only one planning commission meeting. Our meeting in December is scheduled such that the planning commission meeting happens the first week so that all of those items can come to the council meeting just following rather than sitting until January. Um, in November, since there's also only one planning commission meeting, um, if the council wished, you could just elect to cancel that second meeting in November. So that's just another consideration. Um, if you'd rather not move that the same week as Thanksgiving.
You mean that we could have, uh, just the fourteenth and the twenty first and no meeting on the twenty eighth? And that would
Conceivably, yes. I guess one disadvantage to that could be if there, um, are outgoing council members who've chosen not to run for reelection. If there's any policy items that they're wishing to wrap up before the end of the year and the end of their terms, um, they may wish you can always schedule, um, every week where we don't have a meeting, you can see it's, it's listed as special meeting as needed. So an additional meeting could always be added if you chose to delete that and then later wanted to change.
So there's two options. One is that we combine the twenty first and the twenty eighth with a full agenda on the twenty first, or we have no agenda except for the board of canvassers, which is a five-minute item on the twenty first. Does that make sense?
What are your opinions? And are you making a motion?
Yeah, I, I move that we remove the November twenty eighth meeting and consolidate it with the November twenty first meeting.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, Counselor McKay seconds that. Is there a discussion of that motion? For Whipple?
I think I'd be okay with that i- if we change the twenty eighth to a special meeting as needed so that we do have the flexibility in case there really is something urgent.
I think we can have a special meeting as needed, whether or not it's on this calendar, right?
Yeah, we'll prepare, um, so when we prepare the final resolution, I'll update this exhibit. We'll try to be included and the draft will be removed. And so anything where there's not a meeting will just be listed as a special meeting as needed.
Um, I'm wondering, the only concern I have about that is that, well, let's see, the board of canvassers is like a five-minute meeting, right? Um, if there are counselors out of town, Mr. Jones, uh, because of family obligations or whatever, is that, does that create a problem for voting on board of canvassers? Is there a?
Well, it creates a problem if there's not a majority. Now, remember that the board of canvassers is actually made up of the seven counselors and the mayor. So you only need four of those eight people in order to be able to hold the meeting. And some of them could attend virtually.
Yeah, my, so my concern is that, um, I mean, I don't feel super strongly about this, but I am worried that if we combine the meetings on the twenty first, and it feels to me like it's more important to have most of the council here for a regular meeting that includes board of canvassers. And if that's the most likely time when people are going to be gone, that seems like we've set ourselves up for a little bit of failure. So I, I, I would prefer to leave the twenty eighth as a special meeting as needed, and then we can just kind of see who's going to be out of town that week and, and then decide whether or not we're going to combine them or not.
Would prefer to have the twenty eighth as a proper working council meeting? Or a special?
No, I'm saying I'm willing to combine the twenty first and the twenty eighth, but I, I would like to leave open the option, given the possibility that a number of us will be gone on the twenty first, that we could have a meeting on the twenty eighth if we needed to, because we would, we could have a
And I think that's what Elizabeth indicated, that when she prepared this, anything she takes off, she'll put special meeting as needed. And I, and I would just also say that what you're proposing, I think, provides you the maximum amount of flexibility, because there's nothing that says because you listed something in the schedule, you must have the meeting. So if we get to November seventh, fourteenth, and council leadership says there's only one or two items for the twenty first meeting and they're not time sensitive, you can just cancel the meeting and, and only meet as board, the board of canvassers.
Uh, other thing I'll just mention is that the work for the staff, if they're having to do that the day of Thanksgiving or right before Thanksgiving, right, if they were working on the, on the meeting for the twenty eighth, on the twenty first, that really complicates the week of Thanksgiving. All, everyone's scurrying that Monday we get back from.
So is there, um, sounds like there's no objection to this proposal. We're all good. So do we need a vote?
But you don't have to do a roll call.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Anamis. All right, that's, otherwise, okay, so that was the motion, but now we need to approve the, the schedule, correct? Is there any, any other amendments to the schedule? Are we ready to approve it? Okay, I'll call for a vote. I'll begin with Counselor Ellsworth.
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore. Counselor Handley, I'll say yes. Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor McKay.
Yes.
Counselor Shipley.
Yes.
Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you, uh, Ms. Vanderwork, and for all your hard work on that. I know that's a lot of work.
Thanks, counselor.
Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, which is a resolution adopting the revised Provo moderate income housing supply and strategies report. Brandon Larson, planner, uh, city planner will present this item.
All right, um, so we've, uh, we, we brought to you in the end, at the end of September, the moderate income housing element, uh, which was state code required. And, and then a short time later, found out that we were one of the seventy-five percent of the cities in the state that got a, a notice that we were in non-compliance and and so a little bit of, uh, little concern at first, and then found out that it was, uh, really te- just technical issues is this is the first time that the state, that cities had gone through this process. There was some miscommunication between the state and the division of workforce services. And so anyway, the state, the, the cities worked, uh, re- received this letter of non-compliance and worked, uh, quickly to address the issues. They were, again, minor issues. And so I just wanted to, uh, give you an, an update on, on, uh, this on us fixing and trying to address the not, points of non-compliance for this moderate, um, uh, this moderate income housing element. Um, the points of non-compliance, again, were, were minor. There was, uh, we were supposed to, um, verbatim reference, uh, certain sections of the state code. These, these, uh, are basically mandated goals for, from the state to the city, uh, to address, uh, to, to really help, um, modern, to increase the, the, uh, stock of modern income housing in the city. Uh, we, uh, also needed to more clearly define timelines in our goals and then also timelines for our benchmarks. And so, uh, we, uh, had worked to address those issues. I think bullet point four is just telling you that that when, when, when we're referring to fixed guide rail goals, we're talking about, uh, those are applicable to cities that have front runner stations. So, uh, our goals related to, um, our, our front runner station and our, our, um, um, go- goals related to, um, our public transit, uh, needed to, we needed to, to address points one, two, and three to, to hit four. So, um, so we went in and, and made some updates, uh, cleaned up, um, cleaned up some of the housing goals, addressed those, those points again, mainly timing needed to be more clear on, on when we plan to get these, uh, to, to meet these goals or, or, or tell the state when, when these, uh, these goals were going to be met. Again, each year, October, we have to go back to the state and um, demonstrate that we have worked to achieve the, the goals that, that we out, have outlined in our report. And so, um, we have, uh, we ha- have worked hard to, to just organize it better so that there's more, it, the, the timelines are more clear. Um, and so, uh, we, we did remove one goal that had previously been, uh, inserted in the element. It was a goal that we, uh, couldn't, uh, didn't have much control over. It was, uh, related to zoning around, um, uh, transit areas. And so we felt that we'd already addressed that issue. We were just kind of waiting for the development community to respond, and we can't you know, can't force their hand to take advantage of what the city had already done to, to kind of address that issue. So we thought we should, uh, remove that goal, considering that we had, uh, roughly nine others to, uh, to work with. And we only need to demonstrate that we had worked, uh, had addressed six. So we, we've got, uh, more than sufficient opportunities each year to show the state that we're working hard to, uh, make sure that we have the, uh, that we're working hard to increase our stock of, of modern income housing. So, uh, again, timeline on this, uh, so each one of these goals um, ha- has kind of a timeline, uh, short, mid, and, and long. Um, our, our short goals, you can, you can see the balance there. Our, our timeline, the timing of these goals is pretty balanced and and, uh, and so we, we felt like we've got a, a, a pretty good balanced, uh, element. Goals are, 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 um, in good order. We, uh, after we redrafted and changed these, uh, change, updated the, the document, we went back to the state and had them review the document with us. We, we had a Zoom call and went through the document and they, they, uh, gave the, the green light to us and said, yeah, this looks good. So, um, and, and then as noted earlier today, council, uh, Counselor Whipple, we'll, we'll get back with them uh, and, and just do one more round with them, make sure that we're on the same page and not gonna run, run into any roadblocks of getting compliance, which, um, haven't noted yet, but is, uh, we, we need to be in compliance by February sixteenth. And compliance is really important because it's related to, um, uh, funding for, uh, uh, cer- certain fundings that come from the funds that come from the state. So, um, and I've noted that on, uh, to- the top bullet point there. So, um, with that, I'll, I'll turn it to you if for any questions that you may have on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any questions about this item? Uh, I guess my only question, just for clarification, again, I think we talked about this in the work session. Uh, you are intending to reach out to the state contact, have them look at this in advance.
Yep.
So I assume we'll just wait and hear from you on that. And then, uh, assuming there are no major concerns from the council, if there are, they should be expressed uh, between now and January seventeenth, but we'll assume that you'll get that feedback and share it with us and
Absolutely.
Be updated on it in time for the seventeenth.
As far as, uh, clear communication with the, the, the citizens here, this, um, this modern income housing element is supposed, it's appendix B of the general plan. And so our recommendation isn't to take action on it tonight or adopt it or anything. We'll, we'll we'll bring it back to you on the seventeenth and have you adopt it with, uh, hopefully with the rest of the general plan. If it does not look like there's adoption will occur on the seventeenth, we, we will, uh, generate a a separate agenda item for you to, to act on this and so we can get it, uh, so we can reach compliance well before that February sixteenth deadline.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now seeing no other, oh, Counselor Whipple has a question.
Yeah, so just on this additional note, um, that we're eligible for priority consideration if we make progress on six of the nine goals.
Yeah.
Do we know what the state would accept as making sufficient progress in order to be considered for that?
We're still working with that. This is brand new. Um, the first go-round of, of, um, first go-round to, to actually be, ha- go through that kind of grading process is going to come next October, but in van- advance of that, we're going to have like you, the Utah League of Cities and Towns gives us, uh, quite a bit of, of training on this issue. Um, also, uh, we're, we're gonna seek guidance to, to make sure that we, we are, um, we're gonna make the grades. So yeah, there, it's, it's, uh, it's gonna be a, a learning process for us this year and, and so we're gonna make extra sure that we, we understand, uh, what, what to expect come October first, so.
It, it seems like that part of it is the state doesn't even know exactly what they're doing and requiring on this yet either.
Yeah, I mean, a- again, it's a growing process. We, we didn't expect to be here, uh, again, before you tonight, uh, with, with this issue. We thought we'd met all the requirements and there, there seems to have been some miscommunication between the state and their, their division of workforce services and how they intended to even grade just this element. And so we're, we're definitely, our, we're we've, we've definitely got our, our ears up and we're, we're, we're listening and, and getting prepared to, to really hit these goals, uh, come October, so.
Well, I'm excited to see how it unfolds and how when we do our our update next year to show our progress, um, how that goes with the state. At that point in time, would, would we also add additional goals if we've like actually checked something off, or do we keep it in a continuing status?
Um, yeah, that's a good question. As I recall, that, that question came up and I believe that we continue to, we don't change the goal, and I'm gonna have to find out more about this because this is new, but from what I recall, when we had a training on this recently, that we would actually keep it where it's at and keep showing how we're continuing to uh, you know, how, how we're continuing to maintain that goal, basically, or, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much too for working on revising this, especially with the, the moving goalposts that you've been given.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's all the questions we have from the council. Uh, we'll open this item up for public comment. Or anybody from the public that would like to address this item. All right, seeing none. I will bring it back to the council for discussion, any further discussion? So we will, um, seeing no discussion. So we will um seeing no discussion, I I don't need to uh call for a vote on anything. So we will um plan on, as I indicated, hearing back from you between now and January and
Thank you.
Be it again in January.
Sounds great.
All right, thank you. We'll move on then to item number eight, which is uh an ordinance adopting the Provo City General Plan and appendices. It says citywide application.
Okay, thank you. Um again, that last item's part of of this overall bigger effort to uh bring uh a new general, an updated general plan to the city. Um, this general plan process started, uh uh, I think kind of the fact finding and gathering data started back in twenty nineteen and and we've been through through a process. We brought a a draft to you in twenty, uh, the end of uh, end of twenty twenty-one, first of twenty twenty-two and and uh thought to to work on getting some uh the data to confirm that we had heard from the public uh clearly on on uh you know, the how they felt about important issues such as land use and transportation and and so forth. So we got that data, we we went through the process of getting a uh a statistically valid survey and that survey helped us helped us to to uh, it it informed us and we made some changes to the general plan and and uh we redrafted it, took it to the to the department heads through staff, uh took it to administrate administration and retooled it a bit and we bring it back now to you. You've seen, uh, I think we've talked through most of this now and wanted to get it uh before the public. There's a few things, uh, however, now as I I recall, we we haven't talked through the appendices and so we'll we'll get to that in a few minutes. I just do want to kind of recap a little bit about uh, you know, this general plan update. Uh a lot of it's still the same. We still have this is the same vision for it. The graphics are clean and uh we we, the idea coming into this is that we want to kind of a sleek trim down graphically, um you know, nice looking document and it's still still a nice looking document. It's thin. Uh, we have clear commitments to the city on on issues related to land use and transportation, housing and and economic development and so forth. So I have a lot, a strong sense of uh that this, the city wants people to feel like they belong here. It goes along with our welcome home. Uh, welcome home motto and and uh we we still, this general plan still values natural resources and and uh multimodal transportation. We have a uh have uh actionable goals throughout the document to guide the implementation of it. What's different about the document is again, the the this process was informed by a statistically valid survey from a random uh representative sample of the citizens. And um, so that's informed some of the policies that have come into this document. uh, it it a it's a, it's a much deeper document than it was. There's a much uh greater depth of of treatment on this topic than than previous. And we're 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 glad to have that. I mean, we added some additional tools to it to to or proposed to uh add some additional tools uh to it, such as that uh, the um the the tool that we talked about in the uh work session to evaluate housing uh re- rezones related to housing development. So we really feel like this housing chapter is going to add some good value to the city in our policymaking. Economic development, of course, we um we have a good city that's uh that has a lot of good things going on for it, such as our our educated workforce, our airport. Uh, there's a lot to, a lot of beautiful scenery here and things that attract people to our city and got uh some wonderful uh educate, educational opportunities and and uh so city's got a lot going on for it. We discuss that in our economic development uh chapter. Talk a lot about transportation. The city's known for uh being friendly to um many forms of transportation. And and so we want to continue with that and broaden on the successes we've had in the past. And so we talk about uh, we have a a pretty robust transportation chapter. And 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 I guess it's a good point to good time to point out that, you know, we can't adequately address everything about transportation in this chapter. And it's not meant to. This is a high level document. Each one of these chapters highlights or points to another document that that's going to even give us. Like, for instance, we have a transportation master plan. This transportation master plan is going to go much more into detail than than when what we will in a few pages in in this chapter. And so each uh, this document references um pretty much all of the 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 planning and working documents we have in the city. And and so it just kind of brings all of those documents and and kind of brings them into one and and uh, so I think it's a help, very helpful that way. Um, public services and safety, helpful chapter on discussing uh the provision of services, uh making sure that we've got a balance of of services to our citizens. Talk uh also about public safety and making sure that uh we are adequately preparing for emergencies and hazards and taking care of our police officers and firefighters to make sure they have the resources they need to address these issues and s- and and then as we go on, we've uh talked a lot, talked a lot about this survey. Statistically valid survey, open space and recreation is one thing that the citizens told us, hey, you guys are doing a really good job on this. Keep it going. And so I we uh um yeah, we have a an open space and recreation chapter that that helps us to continue that good work and continue to build upon the excellent facilities and resources we have for for the public. Um, resource management is a helpful chapter. We want to be, we want to uh develop a resilient Provo, one that will um stand the test of time, stand uh that we we need to grow and make sure that we're thinking of water and our air quality, that we're being um looking at uh uh, we're we're looking at technologies and and innovations and making in in how we use our resource and being wise in our in our stewardships. And uh, the the obligation we have to our future generations, make sure that we hand off a a a good, great city to them. So um, it also references our conservation and resiliency plan. Um, which is a doc- a document that's kind of chasing on the the tails of 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 this general plan, a document that will go much more into detail about uh uh resource management and sustainability. So um, we talked, uh, as I noted earlier, each one of these uh chapters has a a a set of goals and objectives at the end and and so this implementation matrix brings all those documents, uh, all of those goals into one place and gives us a a really good uh framework for for making this plan actionable. Now, getting on to some things we haven't talked a lot about, um so appendix, there's four appendices, uh A, B, A through D. And the first one's community engagement. We talk we outline in this document, kind of the the engagement process we went, uh, the the process we went through to get uh public feedback on on our, for our general plan. And uh, give a little bit of a timeline in there and some of the different uh events that occurred to to get, gather feedback from the citizens. Um, there there frankly is just a a a massive amount of data that we gathered from the public on uh, through this process. Um, we included the results of the Y two survey. And uh, and then uh made a note that if you want to see the data from the other events, you're you're welcome to contact development services and we can make that data uh available. We just didn't want to uh uh, we wanted to keep this document thin, so uh thinner, so we didn't uh want to include all all the massive amounts of data that we have on this one. But it's, we, needless to say, we we've went through a very very robust process to gather feedback from the public on this, on this one, on this uh general plan update. Um, we've talked about the modern income housing element. It's it's uh appendix B. The biggest thing here is we are established, the city's establishing specific goals to improve access to modern income housing. And uh, when I talk about modern income housing, I'm not talking about low income housing. I'm talking about, you know, the city, the the area has a median income, an area median income, AMI. Sometimes you hear that thrown around with loans and things. But AMI for this area, um, most, the most recent number I had was around eighty-three thousand. So modern income is it is um it is uh seventy, forty-nine to seventy, eighty percent. Remind me again. Sixty to eighty. It's roughly sixty to eighty. That's our housing expert in the city. Um, so the these are our firefighters, our teachers that that we housing prices are 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 a big challenge, availability is a big challenge. And so we um, are working hard to make sure that we have goals to help uh these these people um, ha- have how adequate housing, these people that that do so much to service in our community. Um, annexation policies, maps and policies, appendix C. This was uh, this is a really important uh piece, uh collection of information. Uh, we don't have a lot of annexations in the city, but we do have some. We just had one um uh, that that was uh finished up this year. And we've got another one in the, one or two in the works and and we need to have policies that kind of guide that process. Uh, occasionally we have uh adjustments with neighboring cities and we have to have policies to guide that process. So this appendix C uh guides that process. And a lot of this uh information was carried over from the the uh, the outgoing general plan. We updated the maps and updated some of the information in it to to make it current. But uh we uh, so we we definitely need this set of information. Disconnections refers to the event of the city disconnecting a piece of it uh of of its uh city from from the rest of it. Uh, seventy-eight, nineteen seventy-eight, we in- incorporated a big piece of land out uh to the east of us for the potential of of a ski resort. That that piece of land's been with us for some time. And so there's a propel uh, a disconnection map included in this appendix showing the the potential disconnection of that large annexation. And finally, um as I noted, um, we we are proposing a general plan update. Um, this map is super important. Each, uh, it's the undergirdings for the zoning in the city. This map tells uh, covers every portion of the, generally every portion of the city, except for that large area that could be disconnected at some point often. Um, yeah, maybe it's better to go here because it'll give you a better look at it. But this uh area here that could be disconnected, it comes clear out to here. Um but the rest of the city's covered in in uh a land use designation. We updated this document, uh, the the uh consultant that helped us uh in the past with this general plan process, uh, prepared a a future land use map. And we felt that it needed to be uh update uh kind of worked on. We decided to scrap, ultimately decided to scrap their 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 map and just kind of update the one we had because we felt like it was more helpful and uh, we weren't reinventing the wheel. But what we did do is if if you can notice, um, I went the wrong way. Uh, this area right here, so this light green is agriculture. So these these spots right here, back in uh the old or the 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 effective general plan map has this all light green, which is um agriculture. And and the truth is, a lot of that land is federally owned or owned by BYU. And so we we've established a new general, a new land use designation, this uh parks, recreation and open space. Uh, that and and this map now more clearly shows where public and private property is. Same thing with the south of Lakeview Parkway. Um, you can see a lot of that land's uh south of Lakeview Parkway, especially by the lake is is private or publicly owned, that that dark green, open space, land use designation. You can see the lighter green agri- uh, which is again agricultural. We uh, kept that uh land use designation as it has been in the in the past for several years. We now have an airport uh designation. And uh, might I add that uh, so um all of these, uh, y- you can see there's the um, transit oriented development uh land use designation. You've got the downtown designation right there in the middle. Um, and you can see it's kind of candy cane looking uh land uh treatment there all through the city that though, that's just kind of our commercial land use designation. All of these areas, we we gave them soft edges so that um, they didn't follow parcel lines so that that it gave the city more flexibility in their land use decision making uh in rezones and general plan decisions. Um, we we gave more hard lines for, you know, things like residential and agriculture, but wanted to give the city more flexibility uh in their decision making in those, like I said, commercial and industrial and uh, tho- those types of uses. So this is uh, again, this is, we we really went through quite a process to update this general plan. This particularly, we we took weeks going through this, making making sure that uh, that this uh, loo- looking at the the one, the plant, the map that was proposed to you a year ago, comparing it against what we, what's currently adopted and then just really refined it. It made it, I think, a lot better. These purple circles, I haven't noted are uh, areas of significance, they're gateways. And we want to make sure those are up um, looking good. We've got a gateway plan uh, that we've started working on. Also, uh, these areas, right, um, it's sometimes hard. There's so many layers on this map, but you can see neighborhood plans, you can see the icon right there. We've identified on this map where all the, where we have neighborhood plans uh, for, you know, where the neighborhood plans are, where we've completed those. So it, I I think that's helpful too. So anyway, this this is uh been a huge undertaking. We feel uh I mean, frankly, we feel really good about the work that we've done. We've we've worked our uh, we've given you a really good effort. And uh, it's been vetted heavily through the, through uh staff and through department heads, administration. It's been uh, the public input's been uh more robust than any process I've ever been involved with. And and so we're we're proud of it. We know that you have comments and we're looking forward to getting those uh comments to a- address. But we 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 feel like we've we've given you a vastly improved document from a year ago. And without any questions, so.
All right, thank you. It's a lot of information for the public, especially um any questions from the council about the presentation, about the appendices in particular? Whipple?
I'm just wondering about the location of the label temp on this map.
That's for the temp neighborhood.
It it looks like it's in downtown more than it is over at temp. Is that just because you had to fit it in with the labeling of five hundred north and freedom or?
It may have been a a and that may be the case. It may have been bumped by that Freedom Boulevard label right there too. Sometimes some of the labeling is automated.
Yeah.
So we can check and make sure that that uh, see if that can be bumped a little bit to the north. But um, I'm wondering if it got bumped from that street label.
Since that is the only quibble I have, thank you. But really, this is, this is so much better than the map that we had before.
Yeah. All right, seeing no other questions, uh, we'll open this item up for public comment. Again, we'll ask you to uh, as you approach, uh, give us your name, your city of residence, and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, um, my name is Eric.
Hi, my name is Eric Chase. I'm the neighborhood chair in the North Park neighborhood. I was just, I wanted to talk about something else, but looking on the map, the the lack of commercial on the west side kind of looks like you're planning specific food deserts out there. But I wanted to talk a little bit about what happened about two weeks ago, the fatal pedestrian accident on November thirtieth on eight hundred north and eight fifty west in my neighborhood. The things we learned about it now are pretty appalling and shocking to us. The neighbors are disgusted and discouraged because of the the hit and run nature of the the incident. Someone would just leave someone to die in the street is pretty terrifying for a neighborhood. But but what no one is really shocked about was the fact that there was a auto pedestrian accident at at that spot and in our neighborhood. You might not know it, but at the same, on this very same day in Orem at four hundred south and four hundred west, a child and a crossing guard in a crosswalk were both struck by a vehicle and both of them were sent to the hospital. So if you're not familiar, four hundred south, four hundred west is is not a big street. There's only one traveling and going in each direction on that street. Afterwards, the Orem Police Department put out a statement at the very end. They say, we appreciate all our crossing guards who work hard to keep our children safe. They could not safely cross our streets without them. Contrast that with, you know, Orem's nickname, Family City USA, not a safe place for children to cross the street. I want to talk about this in relation to the general plan and the 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 transportation master plan that's referenced in it. No matter what the exact circumstances in in both those incidents, the the takeaways are are our roads have been designed to maximize vehicle speed and traffic volume at the expense of everything else, including safety and health of all our residents. And we've, we've made it impossible to safely get around without using the car for almost everyone. There's fundamental problems with how we've chosen to design our roads that have led to this. As a neighborhood chair, I believe I'm granted more time still until you haven't changed the neighborhood program.
Now, yeah, but this isn't an item about a particular neighborhood, so we'd like you to give everyone equal time, if that's okay, Eric.
Okay. I I spent a little time reviewing MAG's Transplan fifty. Their transportation document that is for the region. The the totality is this, they're going to keep spending exclusively on automobile infrastructure, including new highways, winding roads, until every single road in our city is at capacity with vehicle traffic. And then they'll consider alternate forms of transportation funding for us. The kind of planning documents that 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 the Transplan fifty and that that we need to be sure we're not producing are going to see more and more frequent, more deadly accidents anywhere in the city that impacts negatively quality of life for everyone. Even people who exclusively drive their cars. As as a city, we have a chance to be a leader in the state and embracing better transportation policies that will help strengthen us financially, culturally and increase increase our citizens' health and safety. Just because we've built ourselves into this paradigm of accepting the needless death due to automobiles doesn't mean we need to continue that in the future.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kat Linford, Provo resident. He took the words out of my mouth, but I'll try and summarize really quickly. Obviously, the general plan is not the transportation master plan. And I think we all understand that that's that's here on this topic. But because the general plan points to the transportation master plan, that's why we're here. The the T M P is outdated and according to some of the council members that we've spoken with, it's, it doesn't align with how it in how they envision our neighborhoods and how Provo should look. To destroy neighborhoods and uproot single family homes for a roadway is extreme opposite of welcome home. To Brandon's point, in the general plan, the study about moderate income homes, the plan to widen eight twenty north, eight hundred eight twenty north, you will be destroying forty to fifty boner income homes for a wider road. And I just ask the council, consider that in in everything that they look at for the general plan and the transportation master plan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rebecca. I'm also a resident in this neighborhood along eight hundred north.
Can you state your full name?
Sorry, Rebecca Levitt. Sorry, I'd also like to second everything that's been shared as well as, you know, as a resident, our concern seeing children cross the street right in front of our house as they walk from our side of the neighborhood across the other neighborhood where the elementary school is located. Also, the concern for those children, the concern of the residents for just self and health itself, sorry, health and safety generally as increased roadways can increase pollution and noise and traffic congestion and otherwise decrease the health of those who live around the area. And also, just as my husband and I own there, we rent out our basement and the response when we listed our basement was overwhelming. There's a huge demand and a huge interest in living in that area specifically from college students, from singles, from working professionals to young families with children, to older families or older single adults. Just to rent a single, one bed, one bath, single tiny basement apartment anecdotally. And so I think, I again, would also like to encourage city council to consider that as they consider whether or not we want to adopt the expansion of eight hundred north. And I would really hope that we would fight against that and instead focus on improving our community instead of improving roads. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dylan Sindrich. I live in Provo in the temp neighborhood. I'm also here to comment about the general plan and the way that it references the transportation master plan and specifically the widening, proposed widening of eight hundred north and eight twenty north. The cost of the project, proposed cost is seventy million dollars. In the twenty twenty four to twenty forty capital facilities plan for the transportation master plan, there are twenty items. This item is seventy million dollars. The other nineteen combined costs seventy two million dollars. So let's think about the fact that we are spending an exorbitant amount of money to widen what would be approximately two miles of road in the middle of a residential neighborhood where a girl my age was just hit and killed by a car. There's an elementary school along that road. That road crosses over the Provo River Parkway. There are people that walk and bike every day along that road. And under this proposed plan, we would turn it into a five lane road with a hundred and twenty foot right of way. We would buy up single family homes, tear them down. And this road is not going to serve Provo city residents. If this road is built, U dot will eventually build a freeway exit. And this is going to serve people that don't live in Provo that commute to the hospital and to BYU. And so my question for city council is, why would we spend seventy million dollars of Provo taxpayer funds to build a road that is going to help people that don't live in our city, that live in Lehigh, that live in Spanish Fork, that commute into Provo? They don't pay tax dollars in the city. And why would we fund a project that is going to make it difficult for families that live in the area to take their kids to school? It's going to make it difficult for us all to use the Provo River Parkway, make it unsafe for everyone that lives in that neighborhood. And I would ask you to amend the transportation plan to remove that item from the capital facilities plan and make a specific mention in the general plan that eight hundred eight hundred north and eight twenty north will not be widened in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Erickson and I wanted to also comment on the transportation. My concern with eight twenty and the widening, but also the additional infrastructure that would be put in place, the additional traffic that will come. The concerns that I have are are several fold. One of them is the amount of traffic coming into the center, a center of the city where we've already spent many millions of dollars to try to increase the public transportation, increase bike lanes, to try to provide provide alternatives to bringing cars into an already congested city that has difficulty with controlling its pollution. As is mentioned, this road would come past not just an elementary school, but as several schools in that area. And the recent studies that have just been published by University of Utah, as well as some others, show that the increased pollution affects children much higher than it does adults. And so I think that we're going to be causing difficulties for ourselves, our children and for the future. One of the things that they say that pollution causes is increased depression, something that we're already having additional and expensive problems within in this area. There are alternatives, and I've lived in a number of cities and countries that have alternatives to this that provide effective and cost effective traffic reduction solutions. And I think that we really ought to look at those kinds of possibilities before we decide on something that we don't know what the actual effects of that will be. I think this goes into helping us fulfill the governor's mandate to try to reduce pollution. And he's spent a lot of money on that. So I would hope that you would consider reviewing this again. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Matthew Sanders. I'm a resident in the downtown neighborhood. I've lived in the area for for five years and have lived in Provo and also lived in Orem for a little bit, but came back to Provo because it's one of the only places that has walkable communities, that has resources like the rec center and the library that we can walk to and grocery stores and has been begun investing in public transportation that allows residents to get places without needing a car and without contributing to the pollution problem. And I'm also here just to encourage the the council to reconsider how the transportation master plan fits into the the general plan with the widening of eight hundred north and eight twenty north. Provo doesn't want to become just a huge suburban sprawl like other cities here and like California that just has few ways and highways. And it's impossible to get anywhere without a car. And I just want to voice support for using those funds for things that will help people here, like improving the the public transportation system, which is ultimately just going to make Provo a a better place to live and thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tyler Sanders. I live in the Joaquin neighborhood of Provo. And I'd also like to speak of objecting to the proposed widening of eight hundred north, eight twenty north in the transportation master plan and how that fits into the city's general plan. I truly believe that the walkability of so much of Provo is something that makes Provo great. It's something that makes Provo unique. It just makes it a place that I want to live. I personally, in my daily life, I find myself that I I find that I would rather walk a mile and a half to Center Street along walkable roads than walk five hundred feet to cross nine hundred north, which is a a five lane road, very similar to the posed road that eight hundred north would become. If eight hundred north is widened as proposed, it'll isolate the neighborhood, isolate businesses from the people, the the customers that they need. And and those people from the amenities and and places that they so enjoy and and rely on. We we need to remember the simple rule of transit that people will take the transportation option most convenient and most effective for them. If we prioritize cars and make that the most convenient form of transportation, then that is the mode of transportation people will take. Because of this, the widening of eight hundred north would, rather than decrease congestion, it would increase congestion because because of this rule. If we really want to decrease congestion and make our roads safer, we should, as many others have mentioned, invest in alternative reliable alternatives to car traffic. Furthermore, as mentioned, this project is prohibitively expensive at seventy million dollars. And I question why we would want to spend half of our transportation budget to widen a couple of miles of road with all the negative externalities of of pollution, of fatalities and just generally making our lives worse with that widening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nick O'Connor, Provo resident. And I'd like to urge the council to reconsider the proposition in the plan to widen eight hundred and eight hundred and twenty north. I bike on this road every day and I already feel uncomfortable merging into traffic to turn left to get to my home. And I know that this would discourage even more people from cycling and which is exactly the kind of thing we need to do to which is exactly the kind of transportation we need to decrease the congestion in that area. And I've also witnessed on this road, the current wideness of it is often what people look to when they consider what speed to drive. And I believe that widening will only cause people to want to drive even faster than what the speed limit is and make it more dangerous for pedestrians and cyclists and for motor vehicleists themselves. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Hill, Provo resident. I actually wasn't going to comment on this because I didn't know eight twenty was going to come up. And I'm not here to say that we should definitely not widen what eight twenty, but I'm also not here to say definitely we should. What I think is coming up is that there's going to be some hard questions with this road. On the one hand, yes, widening roads is expensive, it's difficult, can increase traffic. It can have some costs on the neighborhood and the area. But at the same time, there's a reality where we are part of a regional marketplace, both in housing and in employment and in shopping in all areas. And we have regional centers such as BYU and the hospital. And an additional connection to the highway, for example, along with good connections into the center of the city could increase economic development in the city. It could also actually ironically increase higher density developments downtown, which in turn would be more amenable to public transportation. If you look at the area around the hospital, it is an area that I consider very underdeveloped and it could perhaps help develop that area. So my proposal is maybe it's time to set up a study committee or something like that and really look at this issue. Right now, my understanding is that there is a red line along that road that limits what homeowners can do along that road with their houses as they try to sell or move. I understand there's a study going on from the state to decide if they want to put an I fifteen on ramp there. These are issues that we should look into, decide what the economic impact is, decide what the impact on the neighborhoods are and go forward with good information on what we should do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no further public comment, we'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Is there any discussion from the council about the general plan and as a whole, or any of the issues that have been brought up? Mr. Hoben?
I think just given the significant amount of public comment we had, I wonder if Brandon could talk a little bit about what the general plan does state regarding eight twenty, eight hundred the widening, the plan there, just at a high level maybe for the council?
It doesn't say anything about eight hundred or eight twenty north. The dot, the transportation, transportation master plan or the transportation chapter is high level. It talks about, we we start out with a few strategies. Strategies for dealing with transportation, again, very high level transportation issues. Talk about how vehicles are something that is a reality. a reality now, but wanting to try to transition to try to try to work towards having a more multimodal city. We talk about multimodal transportation, alternative transportation. And and again, all very high level, high level discussion in this document. And then we end with a reference to documents that are related to the general plan. Again, this document references references all or nearly all of the the planning and and the the planning documents of the city. So we, the fire, I didn't realize the fire department had some type of planning document, but they do. So we've got that, a parks department, a transportation plan, a parking plan, all of these things are referenced in our general plans. So that that transportation plan, transportation chapter references that transportation master plan and the parking plan and then ends with some goals. So there's nothing specific.
So we're not making any adjustments to the transportation master plan in the general plan?
This has no, nothing to do with the transportation master plan. There's that we reference it in the document, but this, this as we noted in the planning commission, whether or not you choose to update the the general plan, that that transportation master plan lives on and that that's up to, what the council wants to do with that, that's up to you, but it, this has no bearing on that current.
And pardon my ignorance, do we have anything slated to to make any to address or make any changes to the transportation master master plan at this point?
I, that's nothing to, that's nothing I'm aware of. I'm not aware of any change and haven't been involved in any meetings related to that, so.
Okay, I just remember we kind of went down this road, pardon the pun, a couple of years ago and we we had eight twenty, we kind of had defined that, all right, we weren't going to make widening eight twenty a priority at this point. So I was, I was curious if any of that had changed, if there was an emphasis on eight twenty, widening of eight hundred and eight twenty right now that you're aware of and at all for planning.
I haven't been involved in any meetings related to that. That's nothing that's been within my purview related to the city, so.
Okay, thanks.
My my understanding, Mr. Hoben, was that the transportation master plan that we we adopted, like I think feels like about two years ago, maybe more, was something that gets revised every five years.
I know that there is a code requirement that the general plan be looked at every five years, so it wouldn't surprise me if the, if that were to, if there is a similar requirement for that.
Although presumably any of these plans, the Parks and Rec plan, any of these plans are subject to any revisions that we want to make to them or at any, any particular time. But yeah, for tonight's discussion, we're looking at the general plan, although that doesn't preclude the possibility that at a later point we could look at the transportation.
I just wanted to clarify if this was the proper venue. I do have some thoughts on eight twenty and eight hundred. Probably similar to what I shared two years ago, but this isn't the right, the right venue right now to talk about that specifically regarding this, this agenda item, so. At some point, we'll revisit it, I guess.
Any other comments, discussion about the general plan tonight from the council? We, for the public's sake, we spent over two and a half hours on this earlier today. So if you're interested in what we talked about, we did make some motions for some revisions to different sections of the draft, some of which pertain to transportation issues. So you're welcome to go back and check that out. But I would encourage you to look at what will be a further revised general plan document that is currently available for your review online. But as of today, we made some proposals that were were approved by the council, so staff is going to be working on some of those revisions over the next several weeks. And the general plan will come back to us on January seventeenth, at which point we will consider adopting it. It may, of course, you know, we have the the freedom to decide to continue it for for another meeting, of course, but that will be the point at which we will be making our first sort of go at whether or not we are definitively approving it as it is at that point. I don't know if that clarifies everything, Mr. Larson, for the public's sake, but we certainly welcome your feedback and encourage you to go look at the the document regarding a lot of these kinds of questions and any others that might be of interest to you. All right, so we will move on then to item number nine, which is a resolution appropriating funds in the general fund for a increment, for a sales tax increment post-performance payment to Parkway Village. This will be presented by Keith Maury, our Assistant Director of Development Services. Unless he's not, is he not here? Step into the hall. Mr. Pepperoni, do you know if Keith, are you presenting this or?
Let's go on to the next item.
Okay. Okay, sure. All right, so we'll skip forward to item number 10, which is an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding towing operations to add a grace period for patrol toes. Brian Jones, our city attorney, will present this item. And I should mention Isaac Paxman, our deputy mayor, is with us tonight in place of the mayor, who I know is out hosting.
George Handley.
I don't know if it's a little hard to hear you. Feels like it is. Is that microphone a little? Maybe it's just that better?
There you go. Looks like it wasn't really on. So for the benefit of the public, there's been some discussion over the past several council meetings about towing regulations. There were some changes made to simplify our sign ordinances, sign requirements, and to clarify what the fees were. One of the discussions that the council brought up during those discussions was this idea that they had received some complaints from some delivery drivers who had been towed while parked in front in order just to make a delivery. And so there was, there was a discussion about grace periods. We looked around at some other cities and noticed that there were some that did that. And the council expressed an interest in doing so. So this is the way that we've drafted up according to the council's instructions, a way to do that. So again, by way of context, the way that towing regulation works in Provo is that in order for a tow company to do what we call, what I call patrol toes, meaning that they actually drive around just looking for somebody to tow, on a residential property, they have to have a contract with the property owner and the contract has to meet certain requirements. One of the requirements that's already in the code is what you'll see here in subsection six, Roman four, which says that before connecting to the vehicle, they have to document by photographic or video evidence the violation that is leading to the tow. So what's been proposed in order to accomplish the grace period is that to add a section, Roman, Roman five, which would say, once they've done that documentation, they then have to wait 10 minutes before they can actually connect. The reason why, again, councillors are aware of this, but under state law, if the owner of the vehicle shows up before the tow truck is connected to the vehicle, it has to be released into their, into their ownership and they cannot be charged for it. If the owner shows up while it's connected, but before it's been removed, the vehicle, the tow company has to release the vehicle if the the owner pays 50% of the of the potential fee. And then they're entitled to 100% if they actually have moved it off the property already. So and then the one other thing I would say is there's a parenthetical here at the end of the section that specifies that this grace period doesn't apply if the violation is because the person is parked in a handicapped space or a reserved space for a certain apartment or an emergency vehicle space, a maintenance space. It's just if you, if you are parking for in a space that is generally available to anybody else who's authorized to park in the parking lot, you've got this 10-minute grace period. And so that's what this ordinance would do. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions? All right, seeing none, I'll open this item up for any public comment. All right, seeing no comment from the public, is there further discussion of this item on the council? Mr. Hoben?
I just want to say that this item was spurred by just community engagement or citizen engagement, that's the word I'm looking for. And want to thank those who brought it to our attention and said, hey, will you look at this? This is an issue. I think this, we don't know all the implications of this, but I think this is worth a try. We can always change the legislation down the road if there are unintended consequences that we we find out about. But I'm excited to try this and see how it impacts DoorDash and other delivery services and pizza and all that. I think it's, I think those are, you know, those people, it's, it's a different type of kind of service world that we live in and delivery world we live in nowadays, and that's much more common and grocery delivery, all of that. So I think it's an important step for us to take to explore this and appreciate the work put in by staff to to bring something to us to consider.
Councillor Whipple?
Um, I, I think this is a good move. My concern is that we need to let people who are enforcing parking know about this immediately. So I wonder if we have some sort of a plan to send a notice that the law has changed to our towing companies and to the apartments that contract with those companies so that everybody has a clear expectation. I mean, granted, we're in a public meeting now, everybody has constructive notice, but they don't have actual notice. And so if we don't want to have a lot of problems right at the get-go, we need to let all of the relevant parties know about this as soon as we can.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is that something that maybe, I don't know if Breen can help with, or how would we normally do that?
Well, probably the best thing, and I'd defer to to Wayne or Isaac if they have other suggestions. But we, we had a conversation in a meeting that I was in recently about some other issues, just about the fact that as I mentioned in the, in the prior meeting and alluded to here, in order to do these patrol toes, you're supposed to have a certification from Provo City that says you can do them, which means that you have submitted an application showing that you have a contract that meets all the requirements. In the past, and I believe currently, but I'm not certain, there was a police officer who was designated as the person that that granted those certifications after reviewing the applications. I need to, the conversation I had just yesterday was that my intent is to work with the administration, with Chief Beebe and find out who that is, because I'm not certain. And then start, and then talk them through what we've done and have them start working to notify the tow companies that they need to actually renew their certifications.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McKay?
Because of that, should we be putting something on this, like not, it won't be enforced for a month or something while we work on that?
Well, I mean, that, we certainly could. We could delay the effective date. The other, I don't know that that's strictly necessary in the sense that just by default, the way that the city generally handles these things is we wouldn't go out and start citing somebody tomorrow because they didn't know about this. I mean, our, our normal procedure, regardless of what the council says about the effective date would be, we'll go out and tell these companies they need to renew their contracts and renew their certifications and then start enforcing once that notice is, has gone out and they've had reasonable time to comply.
But the problem is the tow companies will be enforcing, right? And then a citizen could go after them for doing something that's illegal.
I mean, the citizen could come file a complaint with the police department and the penalties for violating this are criminal to be enforced by the city. They're not enforced by the citizen. So yes, a citizen could come in and and complain that we ought to enforce and that we ought to criminally penalize the, the the company, but that's discretionary upon the city's part, whether we actually do that or not. So I'm not opposed to to putting in a delayed effective date. I, I think there are reasons that make sense, but I, I'm kind of ambivalent, so I don't have a recommendation necessarily on that. I'm okay with what feels most comfortable with.
One thing to think about is that literally by this weekend, most of the students holidays. And this is, that's the population that that probably the most, that's probably the population that's most affected by this, so.
The other thing that I would mention, just to be clear, because I sometimes, in fact, I don't know if on our last training I even mentioned this, but just so the council's aware, ordinances do not take effect just by being voted upon. In order for them to even take effect, they first have to be signed by the council chair, which usually takes a week or so for the, for the on-base process to go through. Then they have to be delivered to the mayor and then the mayor has two weeks to decide whether to sign them or not. And they don't take effect until that process is complete. So we're generally looking at a two to three week delay in the effective date anyway.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about this item?
I guess I would just act, ask if, you know, if Wayne or Isaac have different thoughts than that, since I didn't discuss that with the administrator. No, I, I think, Brian, you've described it effectively. We'll, we'll certainly work on the notification process. We won't delay on that one. It's important we'll get our.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on this. Begin with Councillor Fillmore. I, George Handley, will vote yes. Councillor Hoben?
Yes.
Councillor McKay?
Yes.
Councillor Shipley?
Yes.
Councillor Whipple?
Yes.
Councillor Ellsworth? Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll go back to item number nine. Mr. Maury, thank you for being here. This is a resolution appropriating funds in the general fund for a tax, sales tax increment post-performance payment to Parkway Village.
I'm sorry, I was trying to be all ready and I thought I had a minute. I apologize for making you wait.
No problem at all.
My goal was to be the fastest item you approved tonight, and I blew it right out of the, right out of the gate. Anyway, we have done several of these sales tax reimbursement agreements throughout the city. And this is a successful one that I'm happy that we get to present to you tonight. In 2016, we entered into an agreement with Parkway Village that if they made some improvements, we would participate and share back a portion of the increase in the sales tax that they could potentially generate. The first year after that, that agreement was signed by the city council, we owed them $26,000, which showed an increase. So they had begun to perform better and that number has gone up every single year. In the fourth year now that we're doing this agreement with them and we have the sales tax figures, the amount that we owe them is $69,082. So it hasn't quite tripled, but it's close to tripling what they had done in their first year. And to me, that's just a sign of exactly why we do these agreements. It helps us incentivize retail development and continued improvements from the developer, the owner of the property to reinvest so that those stay vibrant. And I think the fact that now that we have a mixed-use project being built directly across the street from them that will support this, I expect this number to continue to go up and to increase. So I'd encourage you and ask you to please honor the agreement that we've already entered into and approved as appropriation.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Maury? Okay, is there any comment from the public on this item that anyone would like to make? Seeing no public comment, then I'll bring it back to council for any discussion. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote and I'll begin with myself. I will vote yes. George Handley, councillor Hoben?
Yes.
Councillor McKay?
Yes.
Councillor Shipley?
Yes.
Councillor Whipple?
Yes.
Councillor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Councillor Fillmore?
Yes.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll turn then to item number 11, which is an implied motion on an ordinance amending the Provo City Code to make corrections and updates throughout the city code regarding the neighborhood district program. And Rachel Breen, our communications, well, I should know your title, what if communications guru, what is it? What did we call you?
Coordinator.
Neighborhood coordinator and communications specialist. All right, we'll, we'll get that down. Sorry, we can do better than that.
I don't even know what it is. Okay, so back in August, the city council had passed the new ordinance to do the new neighborhood program. Instead of the old neighborhood program with the 34 neighborhoods, we're now doing the district neighborhood program with five districts. And so because of that new And so because of that new program and the changes in it, we need to make changes in the code in chapters 14 and 15 on this. Let's see. Okay, so just kind of going through a few of these items. So one of the main items is the way it used to be done was when Development Services received a planning application, they would email the neighborhood chair and they would also email the applicant, telling the applicant to get a hold of the neighborhood chair to arrange a meeting. And so there was all these rules about you had to do it in a certain number of days and you had to contact these people and and then you had to arrange the meeting, find a location and all of this. And so now with the new program, it's a set schedule. So instead of trying to figure out when to hold a meeting and then trying to inform everyone about when the meeting's going to be held, the meetings are held on a set schedule through the year. And, and they're always going to be held in the same place in the city hall community room. And that way, everyone knows when the meeting's going to be held, what time, where, and the agendas will be published online on the city website. So you can kind of know. So it's kind of did away with a lot of this wording on here. Because it's all going to be done automatically. So, so that's this first one here. And then there are certain items that automatically go on the agenda. And so this one is one of them is the major street plan. So whenever there's amendment to the major street plan, that automatically goes to the neighborhood coordinator, who then puts it on the agenda for that district. And so they know what, what's going on there. And then most of these that are in here are because we're either fixing language, we're fixing grammar, we're changing it from neighborhood chair to district neighborhood chair. And then some of these, as we were going through the code, we realized we didn't need it. Like the conditional use permits. If they apply for a conditional use permit and it's in the code, what they're trying to do, then it gets accepted. There's really nothing that, that we can do, like having a neighborhood meeting isn't going to change if, if they're doing something that's allowed in that conditional use. So that's why we pulled that out as far as automatically going to a neighborhood meeting, because there really isn't anything that you can do on that one. And then some of these were just kind of a little strange, like this moderate impact service organization and and where we didn't even know what that was, is something we've never done. No one knew the definition of a moderate impact service organization. We couldn't find a definition anywhere. So those we pulled out because we haven't been having neighborhood meetings for them anyway. And that's how a lot of these are, because we were kind of like, oh, we never really have been doing this in the past. So we just took it out of the code to clean it up. And here it's just again, cleaning up the language, changing it from neighborhood to neighborhood district executive board. And, and a few of these others that don't automatically go, but, but could go. And that's something that I wanted to, there are some items that automatically will go to the new district meetings. And that's those street plans, the general plan amendments and any type of rezone. Those will come to me, I will automatically put them on the agenda, notice it to the neighborhoods to and also online that that's what's going to go on. And but with the new program in chapter two, it also specifies that the neighborhoods in that district, they can decide what they want on the agenda. So if it's not one of those three items that automatically goes on, maybe they want a project plan approval to go on. Maybe they want something else. You know, maybe they do want to hear about the conditional use permit, even though there's really nothing they can do about it. It can still go on the agenda. That's still in there as part of it. So this is just kind of cleaning it up and just cleaning up the language, changing it from neighborhood to district neighborhood and kind of explaining how, what will automatically go on the agenda and what won't. And so that's kind of the cleanup of the language. So do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, no questions. Is there any comment from the public on this item? All right, seeing no comment from the public, I'll bring it, you have a question?
No, well, I have a comment. All right, I jumped ahead.
Okay.
Say your next sentence.
I will now bring it back to council for discussion. Counselor Ellsworth?
I just wanted to thank Rachel for jumping into this with both feet. I think that this is, it represents a lot of research, a lot of a lot of application and where you're new to the role, but certainly have had a lot of proximity to it. It's just, it's great to see your work on this and it's really appreciated.
Here, here. This is, I'll remind everyone, this is the first hearing for this item. So does any council member desire to consider this item again at the next council meeting? All right, then I will, if there, is there any further discussion of this item? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. I'll begin with Counselor Fillmore.
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
I, George Handley, will vote yes. Counselor Vice Chair McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth? I think that was a yes. Barely audible.
Yes, it was a yes.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote. Uh, thank you uh, for that and we'll move now on to item 12 and 13 are related. So Mr. Ardmore, I'm wondering, will, will you just present both of them together or how do you want? Okay, let's, let's do them together. So this is an ordinance amending the general plan map classification of approximately 24 acres generally located at 3450 West Center Street from residential to airport related and also uh, an ordinance amending the general map classification of approximately 11.07 acres generally located at 3410 West Center Street from also residential to airport related. On a completely unrelated note, I never know why we use approximately when the number is always very specific and why we say generally when it's also very specific, but anyway.
Because those addresses don't yet exist.
Okay, all right, that's probably helpful.
There's background on that. So maybe I thought first I would try to address the questions that came out of the study session today, so I don't get all involved in my presentation and forget. Um, so one question that was asked is uh, whether there's equestrian trail planned along the south side of the river here, uh, which would be the north sides of these two private properties. I confirmed with the Parks and Recreation Department that there is not a planned equestrian trail. Um, there are going to be equestrian parking in the new park next to the Delta Restoration Project. And I'm planning on some horse trails, equestrian trails through that Delta Restoration area, but, but not along the south side of the river as its private property. So, um, so now we know that and then Counselor Handley, you asked about the kind of the overall acreages on the west side for both the airport related designation and then airport industrial zone. So I was able to gather those. Currently in the general plan, there's about 650 acres uh, around the airport, north and east of it, uh, that are as designated as airport related. Um, of that, nine acres of that has been approved as airport industrial zone. Uh, the majority of it is still ag agricultural zone. Um, there are another two pieces uh, that are, that equal 28 acres, uh, that are M1, which is pretty similar to the airport industrial zone and then one was used because that zone change was taking place before the airport industrial zone was created, uh, the staff created that this last year. Um, so, so all in all, maybe about 30 acres of that, that general plan designation have been zoned to that use at this point.
Can I ask a follow up question about that? So in the opinion of the staff, um, I mean, because we've got airport, is it airport related to the south?
Center Street?
Right, right across the street. Neither of these properties is directly adjacent to the airport, correct? This is farther east and north from the airport. So, and what's the status of that south plot?
Um, so the south one, um, so there's the, the one piece that is zoned, or there's two pieces. Um, if, can you make it so I can click through? Oh, there we go. Okay, so, um, this piece here is zoned to M1 on the south side and then this piece over here that kind of continues west is zoned to M1. So those are two pieces that are already zoned uh, in the airport related designation and then further south on Lakeview Parkway, about 652 south is the, the third, that's actually airport industrial zone.
So, um, given the numbers you've just communicated and the vast majority of which is not yet even under sort of active development, why in the judgment of the staff is this northern parcel needed as airport?
It's a fair question. Um, so maybe I'll just kind of jump into, to the background and, and the staff report on that to answer that question. Um, so initially, like you see here, uh, it's, it's currently planned for residential and that was, that was the plan that came out of that 2018 process. The landowner, uh, expected to, to keep farming and to eventually go to residential. Um, and, and that decision was made, uh, when the property owner was, was approached by the applicant, uh, this group that wants to do this industrial park. Um, it set in motion a couple of things, a conversation with the property owner about maybe a change in plans, um, but also a conversation with Jonathan Hill, uh, the neighborhood chair down there. Uh, and Jonathan Hill met with the neighborhood a couple of times, uh, put it on the Facebook page, but then also because this was a pretty recent kind of major land use plan, uh, that they had gone through, that the city had gone through. Uh, he put together committee, uh, that kind of looked at this specific area and uh, in their opinion, uh, because of some, some factors, including the, the flight path from the airport, um, lower impacts on the roadways and utilities with industrial park rather than a residential subdivision, uh, had, had lower impacts in the neighborhood overall. Um, and that the public access could improve along the, the bank of the river there, along the north part of these properties. Those are reasons that the neighborhood, um, kind of supported this idea and and wanted to, to offer their support for the proposal. And similarly, the staff's reasons are, are, are just that. We, I think either one works. I think residential would work here still. Um, we know that flight path is eventually going to go away. Um, it is somewhat isolated, which would I guess be a pro or a con, depending on how you look at it for residential subdivision uh, with the river on the north and Lakeview Parkway on the east. Um, but we see opportunity here for, for a use that's in, in high demand. Um, we haven't received applications on the other properties. That might be for a number of reasons, maybe the, those owners want to continue to farm, we don't know. Uh, so we can only react to the applications we have in front of us. And we, we feel that this would be a, a good location for this use. It is fairly close to the airport along two major roadways. Um, and there are, there are enough, um, kind of with the flight path and the, the Parkway being right there, that those would be kind of negatives on a residential development where the industrial parkway wouldn't feel those as much, have those adverse impacts as much. The amenity along the river, um, the residential development, I talked about this a little bit in, in the study session, the residential development didn't really address the river. Um, so there was a approved subdivision on that 3450 section uh, for 72 homes, uh, with a, a white vinyl fence along the north boundary and not really amenitizing or or providing that recreating space there. Um, I think at this point, we can work with the developer, uh, if it gets that far to, to really detail out. Michael, do you have that, that zoom in that I sent? Can you pull that up? Kind of detail out this, this amenity section. There are things that we could put in a development agreement that guarantee public access, that guarantees certain amenities, uh, widths of, of amenity space, um, programming into that development agreement to, that could, that could ensure that this is something that's preserved and and cherished by the, the neighborhoods around there for, for years to come. So those are, those are some of the reasons that, that staff supports this. Um, but like I said, I think there's ways to make those same similar guarantees if a residential development was to come forward with, with similar ideas. Um, but in, in the end, uh, that it, that really is the question for the city council, right? So do you think that this, these two properties uh, offer more of a value as a residential component to the city or as an industrial component? Um, and that's, in the end, that's, that's your decision. So, um, I think that's all I have for my presentation. Um, so if you have any questions for me, I could try to address those.
Thank you. Counselor Ellsworth and Counselor Fillmore?
Yeah, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested in hearing from them about what land use works for them because I, it, it sounds like someone else is determining that for them. And I was just wondering the origins of, of what they want. And if they're the property owner, that's where I would start.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to answer for them or?
No, they're, okay, I'm sure they'll be able to address that.
Aaron, let me toss out my question also. I, I hope we hear from Chairman Hill tonight on this. Uh, intuitively, this parcel seems like it's more appropriate for residential. Continue that trend north of Center Street. Is there no suitable land available north of center closer to the airport? For this particular project?
Um, north of center?
I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying the residential area is more to the north generally. I'm saying, was there no suitable parcel available for this kind of commercial use south of West Center?
Oh, southwest.
The, you know, more associated with the airport.
You know, the general plan would, would promote that, but I don't know about the, the market conditions. Yeah.
I have a question for Aaron.
Hoben, sorry.
So I actually want to put the question back on you. Does, does, does planning have an opinion on? You know, because once, once it goes this, we're never getting this land back for residential and I've always kind of, I mean, in my mind, I always kind of had the, the impression of like, kind of like Bill, uh, Counselor Fillmore was saying, like north of center, kind of continue that residential, we have limited residential on the west, in Provo. West Side's the only place where there's this big swaths of land. Does, do you all, does Development Services have any opinion on whether they think we need residential more or warehouse more, right?
I think obviously there's a, there's a high demand for both. Um, and I think there's also a high supply for both on the west side. There's a lot of residential, general plan residential land out there that hasn't been subdivided. Uh, we haven't seen that growing as much lately. Um, but there's plenty, plenty of land for it. I think there's, uh, enough connections for it. And I think there's, there's opportunity for that. In the same vein, there's obviously a lot of room for this industrial use.
You ever thought about going into politics?
I haven't. Um, but, but I mean, you have the staff report, you, you can see that we are recommending approval and for the reasons I stated. I, I think it's a good idea. I think, um, there's, the timing is right for this type of development. I think the location is, is justified. Uh, the, the demarcation of Center Street is, is one way to look at it. But now with the Lakeview Parkway going north and south there, you could kind of see that line, uh, west of Lakeview Parkway being a a line that separates residential from industrial. Um, so, I don't know, that's my opinion and I hopefully that answers your question.
I have, I have one more question, but maybe the developer can answer this, but I was made aware that the developer has an intention to, uh, also develop commercial on the north side of the river. Is that, do we know anything about that?
Yes, uh, yeah, in, in his master plan, he, he does show, uh, eventually hoping to annex and, and rezone and and do all of that. Um, but this is, this would be the first step towards that.
So that, that parcel to the north is not, is not annexed?
Yeah, uh, north of the river, it, that's all county land at this point.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks. Are you the developer? Come, yeah, okay. Come on up.
Thank you, counsel. I appreciate the time and I know that it is late, so I will do my best to be as concise as I can. Would you like for me to give a little overview at first or tell me what you, or would you like to ask questions? Please let me know what would be the best format. Would you like for me to give a little overview at first or tell me what you or would you like to ask questions? Please let me know what would be the best format.
Well, is there anything you feel like we need to know?
Absolutely. Okay, yeah. Um, um, I'm glad you asked. Um, there are probably two main assets that I think that we focus on when we took a look at this. Um, number one being that the city probably has one of its best economic assets and that's the airport. And so focusing on uses that complement the airport, we thought, especially in as close proximity as it is. The other asset is the river. Um, the river is beautiful, especially in this area. And the challenge with um having those seventy two residential units there is that we lose especially that site access. We don't see the river you, because the homes will block it and then all there is is a six foot vinyl fence along that trail, which kind of naturally creates a little bit of an alley effect, which maybe doesn't make people that use the trail feel really safe. And we've seen that happen in other developments. And so as we took um a step back, we took a look at, okay, Lakeview Parkway is creating a nice buffer between uses. This residential component, these two parcels are kind of a little bit isolated on their own. And does it make sense for us to do a mulligan and take a look at this a little bit closer and does it? And so we did knee jerk. We met with the neighborhood chair who, Jonathan Hill. We met with the airport director at the time, Brian Torgensen. Um, and with staff to kind of vet this idea through a little bit and even met with Mayor Kafusi to make certain, does this make sense? And as we began to meet with the neighborhood, um I think there was a couple city council members in one of the meetings. Um, it, it resonated. Um, specifically, if we were able to provide a use that makes sense, it has a positive economic impact on this area, has less intense use of infrastructure, which is important, especially because of, especially on sewer. Less use of the roads reduces traffic. And then is there a way for us to improve the use and leverage the asset of the river? And I think we then made a kind of a proposal or if you would, just a wish list. Does it make sense if we, for example, we put in some workout stations, some overlook areas? We provided direct access to the river itself, provided public access to the river and then improved the site view from Center Street. So there would be areas in which you could actually see the trail and see the river. That was the goal. And so the the proposal here is is essentially written in jello to the extent of what would be along the river. This is simply placeholders that we would sit down with staff, sit down with the council, whoever would like to a a committee. And we would work out what makes sense. What would it, what does the city want to see? How can we leverage this asset for the public? And I think that was the the ultimate goal is that um can we provide a better economic use of this land? Um, and there may be, and the goal would be also, can we replace those seventy two, a hundred housing units in other areas, bless you, in other areas on the west side? Um, and there there and staff has indicated that they would attempt to do that. So so the 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 lack, the reduction in the housing would not be such a large effect. And that's essentially where we're at. So I would love to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Council McKay.
Um, I was at that neighborhood meeting.
Yes.
And um your design looked lovely. Um, I like that you're going to work on incorporating some commercial. Have you gotten more of an idea at all about your percentage of commercial?
No, we don't. Um, a lot of that will kind of happen somewhat naturally. There was even some discussions with some of the other residents that live. Um, the gentleman that owns the ropes course that, you know, I believe he mentioned the planning commission meeting that we would utilize um as some things that he could even utilize that would be more retail oriented. And if it worked, I think we would be absolutely be interested in doing something like that.
I think it'd be amazing if you have a couple little food spots.
Yes.
But um I'd be happy with this residential or commercial or, you know, airport, honestly. But there is no doubt that your concept plan made much better use of the river and more of a buffer and protected way to make use. But I love that you're doing a bridge. That's huge. So I went out, checked out this spot and um, I think a bridge will be a huge asset.
Okay.
Um, because it is wide and there's a lot of people that it'll give them more access to even more of the secluded area that is the county land. Um. I got to admit, I don't love your idea of taking over the county land. I think we need to keep some of it.
Sure.
More open and residential and not all commercial, but um I just, I I'm excited about the development agreement and what you've agreed on with the trails and making those more of an amenity and protecting the trees and, you know, keeping the nature. So thank you for that.
Well, my pleasure, please. Anyone else?
Council Whipple.
Yeah, I was wondering if, well, also first, thank you. I was also at the the neighborhood meeting. You've heard some of these comments before. But can you tell us um about how many acres would be designated as this green access space?
Um, I don't want, right now I wouldn't have, I, I'm sorry. Well, I thought there was another comment. I wouldn't know what that exact number would be currently right now. Right now, we have to provide, there's a hundred foot buffer from from the actual river. I think it's from the river uh the top of um the berm back. So um what we would do with that hundred feet would be what we would work out with the city. How would that look? And and how much of that, it, you know, would it, we would, would we provide workout stations? Would we provide more access at certain points to the river itself? Um, that would all be negotiated um in a development agreement with the city. And I think we're willing to sit down and, you know, what makes sense for this. I mean, we want to provide an area where people want to work. And it's somewhere where, I mean, it is absolutely beautiful, um, that river. And this, I think, is a way for us to really leverage that asset that the city has in a way that's very unique.
Yeah, well, at one point in time, I worked at a warehouse kind of like this that was a turnkey thing. And I would have loved if it were a place where I could go for a walk along a trail during my lunchtime because it was a grim concrete space to be in all day long. Um, for the the quality of life, for the people that you would have working in this area, I think this is a fantastic amenity. And I think it would make the space more desirable for the tenants who would come in and use it because it would be better for their employees. Especially if, as Counselor McKay suggests, you get a little restaurant there so you could get their little lunch, go to the picnic spot. Um. That said, if um if this were to end up being a residential area, I would want to see a similar kind of trail situation going on, a similar kind of access. But I understand that that might be more problematic for a residential place because you would have families and children. And you would have to be worried about the the attractive nuisance that is the river on the property. And I think this ends up being a a safer option.
I I've uh got a question.
Please.
Maybe it goes back to, again, this issue on the north side. I think what worries, well, uh, what worries me is I I've been, I like, I like the protection that this is provided on the south side. But if we end up with sort of a commercial corridor as people are floating down the river or they're trying to walk down the river, uh, that feels very unappealing to me. And you may be aware that we have the intention of uh drafting a river and lake plan for the city, which we haven't done yet. Um, and so part of my nervousness is also um will we, will we dig ourselves into a hole where we can't say we come up with some standards for protection of that river? And um and it's too late with this or it becomes too late with what's happening on the north side. So I mean, I know the north side is all theoretical at this point. Um, so I I'm I guess I'm just anxious about making sure that we clarify our intentions as a city about what we really want to see, because I agree with you. The river is the asset we have on the west side. And we have underutilized it in a, in a, and and we we want to correct that. And we'd love to have you as a partner in correcting that. And I like, I like the way in which you've are, you know, represented your intention at least uh thus far with this project, which I think is better than the residential in terms of the riverfront. Um. But if there was a way to make sure that the north side is is similar, is going to provide a similar kind of corridor, um, maybe even more of a corridor. And I don't know how that happens. I don't know if we have to get involved in in protecting some of that space or what what what's uh what would be required, but I just, I'm just nervous about that commercial corridor.
Sure, I understand. Uh, we would be happy to, again, the, these are all hypotheticals. Um, the thought was, is that the the north side of the river and I and I don't really, this the north side isn't really up for debate today. And so I I don't want to get into it in detail and waste your time with it. But there were some reasons why we thought it made some sense and and I would, my preference would be for me to to really come in and spend some time with you focused on that. And if it doesn't, this is a separate kind of uh um entity of itself that we're willing to provide these amenities on these parcels based on this um general plan amendment. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, and you may be aware, I don't know um if staff can correct me if I'm, if I'm mistaken here, but my assumption is that you uh would be subject to the policy in our general plan about annexation, which is that it would come in as open space. We'd have to actually overturn that uh based upon a request to do so. It's not impossible for us to do it, but that's our, that's our preferred uh because we don't want people to annex for the purposes of development alone. So, anyway.
Yeah. Absolutely, I understand.
Okay. Counselor Ellsworth and then Fillmore.
Yeah, um, I appreciate the the accommodations and the extra thought that you've put into this proposal. Um, I care a lot about the river and I wish that the Provo River Trail was completely contiguous and ran on both sides of the river. So what you're doing here checks a lot of boxes. Um, one thing that I'm thinking about in terms of i- in the ideal world where the Provo River is this amazing linear riparian park is, is it, is it creating a relationship that's, that is um indicative of a riparian park, right? So where there's a lot of parking on this north side, a ton of parking on this north side. Um, my preference is that that there's a, some really solid landscaping going into that. Um, I'm less not at all worried or interested in the workout stations, but very interested in uh facilitating a more natural and really highly landscaped area that you don't feel like you're running or jogging or walking um next to a mega uh, yes, what I, what would you call it, flex space or industrial space with tons of parking, but you feel like you're experiencing a, an oasis within an urban environment. So that's my feedback.
Thank you. It's good feedback.
Mr. Fillmore.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've just kind of been bowling over the concern you expressed that we approved this development, at least with respect to the zone change. Built the master plan for the river later. How to sync, how to sync those up after the fact? I thought maybe I'd ask Brian. He has some ideas on that. Uh, we obviously want a holistic approach to future river development. So how would we handle that uh and still allow this gentleman to move along on his project?
Well, I'm inclined to punt and ask Aaron to get back up and fill me in on the background that I don't have about why we're doing the general plan before the zone change anyway, when the plan isn't binding in with.
Um, recently, we've been have, we've been asking developers to take these development applications in multiple steps, doing the general plan first. So that they're not spending a lot of money on the zone change requirements and the concept plan requirements and bringing that all together at once. They're at least getting a read from the council if the general plan is acceptable or not. That's a really convenient way for the developer to put his toe in the water and see if this is a possibility to get this before they spend the time and money on further applications. In terms of the river plan and all of that, because of this, we'll respect the one hundred foot setback from the river. I would have a hard time imagining anything in the river plan that's going to go beyond that one hundred feet. Now, there will be recommendations for how you should face into it, how you should have view corridors of it, those types of things. But I would be surprised if we have a river plan that's going to go even beyond the one hundred feet in terms of restricting use. Does that help at all?
I'm not focused so much on the setbacks as I am the other qualitative issues of the overall river plan.
So you're not giving up anything, you're not giving away anything by changing this general plan in that if the zone change application and concept plan applications come forward to you and you don't like the way that concept plan treats those issues, how the river is going to be treated, don't approve the zoning.
Well, I'm thinking in terms of you're, you're talking about the development agreement, right? And that sounds like that would necessarily precede a larger river plan that we're looking at.
Yes, that likely would.
So we get locked into something, I'm saying, potentially, and how do we, how do we accommodate that? We commonly presume so much on the developer's goodwill. If he gets surprised by something that comes up with the river plan later, that's potentially not fair to him, but you may have a stretch that doesn't conform to the larger concept we have in mind with the river. You know, I'm like, being overly conceptual here, I mean, I just
No, I think.
I I don't want, I don't want to see a hodgepodge if we can avoid it and.
Yeah. I think that is a dilemma. I think I I feel even more for, as much as I've appreciated working with Anderson Development, I feel even more for Tom Halliday who's owned this property for many, many years and has been trying to sell it for many years.
Yeah. I mean, I doubt that Anderson's going to sign a development agreement which says we'll do anything we have to to comply with the future river plan af- after you've done your construction work. So.
Well, presumably, I guess the the it river plan would impact potentially what would be done on the north side.
I think the the river plan would inform future development, but it couldn't be retroactive. And the river today is hodgepodge, which is what we're trying to rectify in the future. But because this is on the agenda today, we can't necessarily implement a moratorium until our river plan is completed. So we just have to move forward.
And that's, but I'm not suggesting a moratorium so much as if there were some contractual device to secure relative compliance later on.
I we, I guess we could have thought of that when the qualtrics proposal was here as well, right? But we wrote the things that we wanted into the development agreement. And I think that's what's going on here.
I'm just airing it out to see if we have any ideas or Brian has any suggestions.
He punted.
Well, no, I mean, and and that's why I was asking, right, is because um you can give a signal uh general plan that you're willing to entertain it. Uh, but to the extent that the rezone also comes to you before the the river plan comes to you, I think you're just going to be faced with that dilemma.
Right, the cow's out of the barn, right? Yeah. Do you understand?
I do, I I do. I guess my comment would be that the cow is already out of the barn to the extent that I already have a development agreement currently, which only requires me to build a ten foot asphalt trail and a six foot vinyl fence. And so
This is better than.
This is better than, I get, yeah, I I didn't mean, my point is, is that I already have the right to to do, I have a development agreement signed with the city to do that. So I'm, what I'm saying is let, I'm willing to back up and do this, take a mulligan and do it right. Now, we may not be able to do it prior to or to be able to wait for your river guidelines. But I would be willing to probably, I I would assume that what we're going to do will be as nice, if not better, than what those guidelines will outline. So.
Thank you.
You bet.
Perhaps it's time to hear from the neighborhood chair.
Jonathan.
Well, okay, I, the, uh, Counsel Oben had a.
I don't have a question for you. I got a question for Bill. Thank you, though. Um. So, Bill, just so I understand, because because my initial thought was, well, hey, let's get the best of both worlds. Because because I don't want to lose the residential on the west side. I I think long term, we're going to look back and regret that we didn't have this many acres of residential as opposed to where a warehouse, nothing against warehouses. Um, but I don't want to lose the residential, so I'm thinking, well, shoot, let's get the residential and this amazing uh plan for the river. He's shaking his head, no, do we have any leverage? To say, give us, give us this awesome plan for the river that you just presented. Why can't you do that with residential, you know?
You don't for this larger piece because there's a development agreement and zoning in place for that piece. And you can't go back on the development agreement because that's a contract between you and the developer. So you could only go back on that with his consent, just as he can only change it with your consent. The other piece is not zoned yet, correct, Aaron? The other piece is not zoned yet, so you do have some leverage there.
All right, so there's my leverage. I want, I want this awesome plan on the river. And if you want the reason, you know, a a zone And if you want the reason, you know, a zone, or if you want to be able to build something.
Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Let me rephrase what you're trying to say.
Okay, well, I was kind of just being. Anyway, go ahead.
What you're trying to say is that if you were asked to do a rezone on that other property, you would have concerns about approving that rezone without some assurances that the that the river trail would look better.
Thank you. So, thank you, Brian. That's exactly what I was going to say. I just didn't really know how to say that without getting sued. I I guess what I'm saying is I I personally, so I respect, first of all, I respect the the neighborhood chair's opinion. I really respect Jonathan and his opinion. And Jonathan's supportive of this. I just think long term, we're faced with two good job, two good options here, and I think I'm going to regret that we didn't have this as residential. There's so much pressure for residential that I I guess I just worry we're going to regret that, especially if we end up building residential around and then you got this warehouse plopped in the middle. I don't know if I'd love that. So I guess that would be, I would love to see us get a great river plan and residential. And to me, I think there's a way to do that, so I'm probably going to vote no on this in favor of hoping that down the road we get residential here with a good river plan. I don't know how we get there. But that would be my preference, but I guess those are my thoughts.
Okay. And Hill, please.
Thanks, Jonathan Hill, Fort Yottat Chair. This was not on the first time I came up here. So I want to give you a couple different angles on this. As Aaron mentioned, we did form a committee, so I want to talk about that. Um, but first, if I could get that Google map up here. Just to give some context of the area and some of the other developments, because I think that's important as we discuss this in this area. Okay. So first of all, this is where most of the existing residential is. There are some residential agricultural houses here that have larger lots, animal rights, things like that. These two plots of land were recently approved by the council to have more single family homes being built on those areas. Up in the corner here is significant for this. This is where the new park that the government is building as part of the Delta Project is going to be placed. That is where the equestrian parking that was brought up earlier will be. Um, and then this will be a trailhead into the the Delta. That is because the river is actually going to be diverted at this point. It will come roughly straight across. You can see a bridge right here that's being built. It goes under there and then it turns northward and the Delta spreads out from that area. At the, at this point, the bike trail is mainly on the north side of the river. You can see it lining there. On the south side, there is kind of a trail. It's mainly a maintenance road along the dyke. That road begins right here. East of here, those houses have property rights right up to the edge of the river. And so there's no public access whatsoever. The trail does connect into this neighborhood here, right where that tree is, uh, tree icon, and then it extends up over here and will go underneath um, this bridge and connect into this park. Okay? Um, that trail will also continue on over here and go underneath Lakeview Parkway on this side as part of the development agreement with that developer. Okay? Um, so that set some background. Um, as was mentioned, this part of the property did come up for approval and a zone change for a residential R18 zone uh, several years ago. Um, at the time, uh, we had just designated that as a residential area on the general plan map. Okay? Now, along this area, there was going to be a trail that would continue and connect into the trail that goes under here and up here to this park area, kind of creating nice walkable connectivity between the various neighborhoods and the park up in that corner. Um, however, it was designated to be a vinyl fence with a kind of dyke road behind it. Um, and the council did raise concerns at the time that this would feel like an alleyway and be unsafe. Um, so when the developer approached us and said, hey, I'd like to consider changing this, we've had some other concerns come up with the airport at this area. I essentially at the initial uh, initial part said, hey, you're going to have to talk to the city about that. And uh, Bill Pepperoni ended up reaching out to me and asked me to form a committee that would look at this. This has been, it's informal, nothing is binding that this committee does. Um, but it's been kind of the policy every time a general plan update on the west side has been. Sorry, I'm going to go way over because I'm doing this committee stuff, but has been.
We don't, we don't have time for you to go way over.
Okay, so you know. Go fast. Okay, thanks. So that's we're trying to end our meeting. That's what we do every time a developer wants to change something. Okay? So uh, I gathered together other former members of the Land Use Map Committee that put together that original map and we looked at it. The developer presented to us in July. Cited the issues with the runway traffic and with the sewage and the roads, potential better access to the river, much like this, the presentation tonight. We then reached out to the airport and said, hey, is there a concern here? Um, I got a very short email back to the, from the airport. The basics said, yes, we have concerns about residential on this property. It's right under the flight path. Planes are somewhere between 50 and 100 feet off the ground when they're going over this property. So they're low. Um, they were also concerned about noise complaints because it lines up with the runway, so even planes taking off in different directions, they get a lot of noise downstream from that. We reached out to Public Works and said, hey, what do you think about the infrastructure impacts? They said, hey, this would be better on sewage and center street traffic uh, than a residential would and mitigate the the issues we have there. Um, so with that, and with the improved trail and amenities along the river, we decided that we could support this um, this property change. Um, now, we don't, we did not consider what we considered the ideal development for this area. We just had kind of the existing and the new and decide which one's the better option of the two. We then did have two neighborhood meetings. Uh, Councilors Whipple and McKay were at one of them. Um, and then it was brought to you guys. So with that, any questions that you have for me?
Thank you. Hey, thank you. Your Hill. This item hasn't come.
Be curious about the the flight path. How long is that supposed to be in effect?
The airport said that it is in their general plan to remove it and put a parallel runway with the other runway. Um, this is the smaller GA runway. It's not generally where the jets land, but they can, especially the smaller private jets if the winds are just right. Um, however, they also said that building that parallel runway is going to be very expensive and they don't know when they'll have funding for it, so they don't expect it for at least 10 years, which we considered a significant time for residents to deal with that.
If it's parallel, wouldn't it be the same? In 10 years?
No, it'll be parallel with the other runway that. Not with this. When you have crossing runways, you can't land planes on both at the same time for obvious reasons. So.
Thank you.
Any other?
All right, uh, we're going to open this up for public comment at this point. Any comment from the public? All right, seeing no comment from the public, I'll bring this back to um, the council for discussion. I'll remind you that both items, this is the first hearing. Does any council member desire to consider this item again at the next council meeting? We would need to to have it automatically continued. All right, uh, so we'll, uh, any discussion of these uh, two proposals? Mr. Fillmore.
Yeah, I'll simply indicate that the, I appreciate the effort that the the neighborhood went to on this and the committee and so. And given the air, given the airport's support for it, I think I'm inclined to support the proposal.
Okay, Mr. Shipley.
Yeah, this is kind of a strange one for me because for, you know, however long I've been on the council, just for a few years, it seems like we just give this significant credence to this planning, you know, for the use planning that we've already done, right? I mean, we we just, it's like religion, like we can't change this. This is what we a a large group of citizens came together and said, this is what we want for this area. Like, don't touch it, you know, like leave it. That's what we want. The other thing that's a little bit challenging for me is that we have hundreds of acres that 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 are that are for in the future use land map are are deemed available for industrial use, right? So this isn't, this isn't us saying, hey, this is the last spot in Provo we could put industrial use. This is us saying industrial use happens to be the the most profitable land use right now, so let's, let's do that. So that's, that's a challenge for me. I mean, as a, as a, as a lawmaker, I think I'm, I'm, I'm told to try to do what's best for Provo long term. And, you know, what the developer can be most profitable off right now, we have to be, we have to give credence to that, but it's not, it's not the end all, you know, for for what we should do. The other challenge that I'm conflicted on is the fact that we already, we already have a development agreement in place that isn't great for the river, right, on the south side? So if we, if we do nothing tonight, uh, if we do nothing, if we say no to this, then we we get this kind of subpar, you know, river plan for the south side going forward. So there's, there's lots of conflicting things going on for me. Um, I guess my, my, my thought tonight is that I'm probably not inclined to support it. Not because I'm not desperate for better use of our river, uh, you know, and and what we could do along the river, but just just because I think it's a, it's a, a really well, it's, it's, it's a weird precedent, first of all, for us to approve something like this as residential and then three months later say, you know, we had a change of mind, let's, let's, you know, zone it to something different. I mean, we've, we've got, we're down the road quite a ways on on one thing. It's weird precedent to change the the future use map after, you know, years of this council saying we we give significant credence to that. It's kind of strange to jump in the area of, you know, this residential area, this residential spot for the city and say, let's just put some industrial there because they're ready to go. So there's just, there's just a lot of concerns that I have. Uh, ideally, we would do a better job around the river, uh, you know, with what we've already approved. And so again, I'm conflicted, but I, but I still don't think I support the idea of just kind of this gut reaction to the marketplace generally right now. I think this, it's bigger. It's, it's not like we had a change of heart about being better about the river, I don't think. I I question that. I I think this is a change of heart about the fact that rates went up. It's harder to sell residential building lots than it is to do industrial property right now. There's industrial property is an easier investment right now than than residential lots. So so we're appeasing the highest, most profitable use for this lot, not necessarily the highest and best use for the city of Provo. And and that concerns me. So anyway, that's my thought.
Counselor Ellsworth.
I think Counselor Shipley makes some good points, but I feel like um, us appeasing market demands is generally what we've been doing with the housing market for the last five years. So there's been some terrible places to build residential, specifically multifamily residential. But because that's what the market demanded, that's what the developers wanted, and there weren't 50 citizens in here opposing it. It was approved over and over and over and over. So we do respond to the market and I think that's okay. One thing I'm thinking about is is this the best place for residential? I mean, if you're next to all this other industrial and there's this traffic on Center Street, is that where we want residential? And I can see pros and cons and it's not a comprehensive planning process in my mind and, you know, a 20 minute analysis or a two day analysis, but having a personal professional experience with heavy industry and knowing that adjacent land uses should be compatible and it generally shouldn't be residential because they will be impacted by light, noise, air pollution sometimes, um, or the perception of air pollution and dust. I think, I think there is a a case to be made for buffering industrial and an airport uses. And I it's interesting that Counselor Hoben thought thinks residential is the best option because most cities want something that brings in uh, tax dollars, property tax dollars over residential, right? Doesn't this bring in tax dollars over residential? So I I guess there's just arguments to be made both ways.
Yeah, to to that point, maybe I, you know, I'd welcome staff, you know, to give feedback on that, but but I think being adjacent to a river probably changes the value of a residential property more than an industrial property in in my mind, you know, I mean, I can put it in a warehouse anywhere and probably get the same price for it in Provo. If I put a house next to the river, I get a premium for it. So just from a standpoint of of real estate value. Yeah, being adjacent to the river with a retail use that could, you know, obviously we'd love some kind of retail use right next to the river that would be cool and and increase value, but we haven't looked at any of that yet as a city. Hopefully that comes, but but I think the next best thing potentially is residential as far as value increase based on being adjacent to a river. And I know it doesn't give us perf, exactly what we want from a river perspective. Um, but if it's just about uh, property tax, I think the the highest increase in value comes from probably having residences there.
Okay, I have a a comment generally about the river and residential next to the river or any kind of use next to the river. This is a unique instance, but it, there have been developments in the past where the back of the residential lots were not abutting the river, but that the homes faced the river and there was a road between the home and the river. And I think that's how, I hope that's one of the concepts that comes into our our rivers plan because it provides more accessibility, more safety, more visibility. Um, it doesn't create that alleyway or that canyon between the river and a back fence. And so if if this ends up residential and we do have the opportunity to to write that into the development agreement or any future development agreement, I think we should consider the orientation of both residential and commercial or industrial so that we are optimizing for safety and minimizing uh, the chance of crime and and insecurity.
I'd like to make a comment. I think um, I, Mr. Shipley often expresses uh, ambivalence very clearly. And I, and I share a lot of the here again, there again, kind of feeling about this one. It's been kind of difficult for me. I I will say I'm, I'm biased toward the river. And I did approve this residential reluctantly the last time. And so I like this much better for the sake of the river. Uh, even though I, I think there are some issues here, but I'd like this to be the standard. You know, I I think with this, you know, and I I sent your commitment to that. I will look to that next process if this passes to to approve a really stellar uh, agreement that that we we can all uh, feel good about that maybe helps us provide some incentives uh, down the road for other areas in the river, because this feels to me like we're getting back some space that we lost with the previous uh, agreement. And so I'm in favor uh, despite my ambivalence. Counselor Whipple.
Yeah, I would just like to say with regard to the concerns about changing the general map plan after it's been adopted. I think that this is probably the best possible way to make that change where those plans are adopted, looking at kind of large swaths and they are general guidance for what we want to see in, you know, big areas and this and this. But to go back and look at a particular area very carefully with the people who were the original stakeholders and who gave input, to have them go back and look at it carefully and reconsider and with um, full deliberation and information to change their mind. I think that's the way we want to be able to make decisions as a city. And I I really appreciate the care that Mr. Hill took with the group and and going through and and looking at this again. And I'm grateful that we have an opportunity to do something better than what we'd originally set out for ourselves. So I would be in favor of this.
Hey, are there any more comments from the council? Then I will call, if not, I will call for a vote on the motion. I'll begin with Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
I'm sorry, let me, uh, let me pause just for a second. We're going to do it twice.
So close.
We're going to do it twice. So we're going to do item number 12 and then we'll do item number 13. So, sorry, Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
No.
Counselor Hoben?
No.
Uh, I, George Hanley, will vote yes. Vice Chair McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes uh, five in favor with Councilors Shipley and Hoben opposed. Item number 13, I'll begin with Counselor Shipley.
Can, sorry, can we clarify this? The reason they were separated is this one has not been zoned. There's no development agreement on this particular one. And so we're not doing, this isn't the choice of like the last one was between a subpar river plan and something different. This is, we don't have a plan at all on this particular parcel. Is that correct?
Get some clarification.
That's correct, but this is only the general plan amendment. This will have to come back before you for the rezone and the concept plan.
Right.
This is just the general plan.
Thanks for that clarification, however. Okay, uh, where was I? Counselor uh, Shipley? No. Counselor Hoben?
No.
I, George Hanley, will vote yes. Vice Chairman Kay?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Okay, that again is five in.
Okay, that again is five in favor with Counselors Shipley and Hoben opposed. Thank you. Let me, uh, uh, make clear. This is my last meeting as council chair and my priority has always been to end by nine PM. But I am not going to let these two items go. They are not going to get continued. So I'm going to just ask that we move quickly. Um, uh, to get through these last two. And I apologize to staff in advance for keeping you here a little bit longer, but it's the last meeting in the year. You can go home and we can enjoy the holidays for the rest of the month. Uh, so we'll turn to item number 14, which is an implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo City Code to clarify language in titles 14 and 15. Aaron Ardmore will present again.
Thank you. Uh, in respect for being brief, these are just clarifications and updates to title 14. Uh, to be consistent with other codes like Public Works or, um, the IBC, the International Building Code. And further clarifications of zoning codes. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Hey, any questions for Mr. Ardmore? Any comment from the public? Okay, seeing no comment from the public, um, I'll bring it back to the council. Does any council member desire to consider this item again at the next council meeting? Seeing none, I will call for a vote on the motion. Um, Counselor, uh, I don't remember where I was.
Hoben.
Hoben?
Yes.
Uh, I, George Hanley will vote yes. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes, but I really wanted to discuss this for about 40 minutes.
Counselor Shipley? I'm just gonna ignore that. Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Okay, that vote is unanimous. Okay, we'll turn to item number 15, an implied motion on an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately 0.22 acres of property located at 1220 east 960 south from one residential R18 and residential conservation to low density residential. Aaron, or Dustin? Right, yeah, thank you. Dustin will present.
Yeah, so this item has actually been before you twice last month. And so I'm sure you're familiar with it at this point. And so if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer any of those that I can.
Okay, any questions for Dustin? Um, I see none. So, uh, I don't know if the, um, developer would, would like to make a comment.
But I will be brief. Um, I did send off an email, so I don't know if you guys got that email. If you did, I can probably be really quick, uh, in my comments. So, um, I guess just, just maybe three things I wanted to kind of leave with you tonight is that we feel like, um, we're abiding by the general plan. And we feel like that supersedes the neighborhood plan. Um, we also think that it follows, um, is consistent with the goals and policies of Provo City, which says to provide adequate housing that meet, that meets population demands and supports the health, safety and welfare of the public. It also says that it maintains and encourages good quality, sustainable housing and infill developments. Um, we have planning and staff, a planning commission approval and staff approval on this project. Um, and the last point I want to make is that we just went through about a 10 10 year to 12 year period of, of really, uh, probably one of the best real estate cycles we've had in Utah. And out of all the, the lots that were, were being sold, nobody touched this lot for a 10 or 12 year period to do a single family home. So I think that kind of states that this, 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 this lot is not meant to be a single family home. And we think we're providing a solution to be able to make a buffer between the multifamily apartments on the east or the west to the single family, uh, units on the, uh, east. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I did, uh, let, um, uh, Christie Charles know that we, and I did announce this a month ago that we had heard public comment on this twice already, and we've had plenty of email from, uh, citizens. Um, and at the risk of offending people, I, I, uh, suggested we would not have further public comment on this, but I want to make clear that that's not because we haven't, uh, listened and read and respected the opinions of so many that have been, um, communicating with us. And we take that very seriously. Um, but in the interest of time and in the interest of uh, efficiency, we, I, I made that, um, executive decision. So you can blame me if you're upset about it. Uh, Counselor McKay did not agree with me on that. Just, my vice chair was favor, but I, I just felt, uh, at this point too, I feel like I can't reverse that, um, given the fact that other people might've shown up. I don't know. Um, so with that said, I'll just bring it, uh, to the council for discussion. Counselor McKay?
Um, I did just find out today that people weren't allowed to comment. And I don't know if there's anybody here who does want to comment. But I, I feel especially since the developer got to comment, it's just really hard for me to vote on something if we don't open the comment to the public. And I don't know, Brian, can I make a motion to see if, if the council is up for allowing comments by the public?
Yes, this has come up a couple of times before. The chair does have the, especially in this instance where there has already been public comment in prior meetings. Chair does have the authority to, uh, make that executive decision, but he can be overridden by the council. So if there is a motion in a second and that motion passes to allow comment, then comment would be allowed by council.
And can, can we just ask if anybody here feels like they have something unique to, to say to this? Yeah, the, the, the reason I'm, I'm concerned about that is, and I've explained this to Count, uh, Counselor McKay already. I, we, we've said no, I, I, I communicated that to Christie. I assume Christie communicated that to the neighborhood. It's not fair to those people who didn't come tonight to suddenly change our minds. So I would feel very strongly that we don't re- but I'll certainly be open to a vote on it. But that's the reason why uh, I don't feel it would be appropriate.
Uh, question. So, um, you, we had let people know at the last meeting that we wouldn't be opening it up for public comment?
I did say that at the last meeting, yes.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, that seems fair, I guess. I, I just, I have a, I, I have reservations as well of like, sorry guys, you can't say anything, you know, it just doesn't feel right. But I think if we gave, if we gave advanced notice, then that feels better, I guess.
Counselor Whipple?
And I will say that having given that information, the, the neighbors who are concerned, who would make comment tonight, did email us again. So they have, have gotten their, their concerns to us again in writing.
That was my feeling. This has nothing to do with not wanting to hear from the public. It's just efficiency. Uh, we're at nine PM, so I was worried about that.
Nine oh two, you didn't make it.
Oh, I've already, I've already blown it. And we've already taken two minutes.
Pumpkin, it's gonna turn back into a pumpkin.
All right, is there a motion to open up public comment or no?
On principle, I'm making a motion.
All right, is there a second?
On principle, I'll second it.
All right, is there any discussion of the motion? I'll, I'll do it by raise of hand. Is there, all, all in favor?
Quick other question.
Yes.
I would like to do a straw poll of the audience to see how many people would take us up on this opportunity to speak if we vote yes on it. Can I do that? Can I just ask for a raise of hands in the audience?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is there a voter now?
Ju- just for the rec- record, we did have a comment just now from the public saying, cause for, for the record, indicating that they feel like they've already said what they have to say.
Okay, so are we, are you retracting?
I can retract my motion. If they're happy, I'm happy.
All right, okay. Thanks for-
Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
Sorry, I need to ask a question of Dustin.
Please, go ahead. That's what we're, that's what we're doing now.
Just has, has staff, has staff's opinion that this would not make a material difference in traffic or safety for this particular spot changed at all over the time that we've been debating and talking about this? Or is it still their opinion that it would not be a challenge to this neighborhood from a traffic or safety standpoint to have this lot be a duplex versus, or twin homes versus a, a single family home?
Yeah, our recommendations would still be the same.
Thank you. Okay, other, other discussion of this item, uh, Counselor Ellsworth?
Yeah, uh, thank you. I missed the last times that these were, that this was discussed. So I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you. And I used to live very near here and I have friends that live in this area and I ran into one of them who lives, uh, uh, approximately two to three doors down. I'm trying to preserve the anonymity. Um, and, and one thing that that person told me is that there was an incidence very nearby of where there was not, um, adequate code enforcement. And then that's colored a lot of the perceptions of residents. Uh, and this is, this is this person's concepts. I'm not saying everyone has that idea, but I just want to relate that I feel bad that the city, uh, the perceptions maybe, or the reality of the city not enforcing or having some kind of nuisance complaints or issues in the area has negatively impacted these citizens and colored this person's proposal on this property. And so I, I, I just feel bad about that. And, um, I hope citizens do feel heard. Um, their emails are read, your emails are read, and then your inputs are important. And, um, uh, like I said, I used to live in this area and I'm just surprised to see so much engagement and, uh, so many voices involved over 0.22 acres. It's, uh, I've been involved with the city for six or seven years and that's fairly uncommon. So thank you for participating in the civic process. Um, whether it's, it ends up the way you want it or not, it's imperative that you participate in these processes because we need to hear your voices and we want your inputs and, and all of us want to create an area that's attractive, that's livable, that's safe, that's healthy. So whatever the outcome, know that I won't speak for all the counselors. Share your interests. I think the other counselors, share your interests. So, um, again, thank you for sitting through this very long meeting and for generally participating. Uh, and, uh, know that we're doing our best with a lot of competing interests.
Counselor Hoben?
Um, so this one's kind of interesting for me. Usually when I'm looking at approving like an ADU or, or an infill or something, I'll drive out to the property and I'll try to get a feel for it and and in, in this case, you know, some of the things I consider are like parking, can, can it absorb the parking? So I remember voting no on an, uh, on an ADU because it, this, the parking was slammed, right? And then, and an extra, you know, three or four cars might make a difference. In this case, I didn't get that sense out there. I felt like the, the parking of the additional unit could be absorbed. Um, and then I also, it, I also look at like congruency. Does it, does it seem like it would fit with the surrounding area? And, and I didn't think, it didn't seem to me like a duplex was a, or a, a twin home or whatever, was a terrible fit for the area. So I'm, I'm going to be honest, my initial gut was, I think I'll vote yes on this, but I can't ignore the citizen engagement. Cause that is also a factor to take into consideration. So I'm just going to say, I really don't get why the significant opposition, there is something going on there that I guess I just don't understand. But I'm going to respect the engagement that we had and the opposition and say, you know, I guess I, I won't support this because of that. And I appreciate the civic engagement and um, like I said, don't really understand, but I guess I'll vote no, um, based on, based on that, those factors, that factor.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fillmore?
Uh, I, I suppose I'm a bit like Travis in this regard. I, I respect the fact the planning department has done its thing and has made an objective recommendation. Uh, I, I respect the plan itself. The plan in its own right, looks like an attractive thing, uh, considering the, the factors there. But I, I can't get over the fact that we have such an overwhelming neighborhood adverse response. And I think we have to respect that, the people who elect us to serve on the board. Maybe Travis is hinting at the fact that maybe there's something we don't know. But the fact of the matter is that I feel like I have to respect the overwhelming citizen negativity towards this project and support them in that. So I'll vote no.
Mr. Shipley?
I've already made a comment, but, uh, I'll just add that, you know, I don't think it'll change, you know, the, the verdict of this, but, but one of the things I'm having a hard time with on this as well is, is that I just feel like it, it, it allows a neighborhood to say no to a person or a personality potentially that they don't like. I think we've gotten away from, that's why I asked about the safety concerns and the traffic concerns. And, you know, I, I, I mean, I, I just think we need to stick to the objective facts of this. And, and I'm, I'm having a hard time doing that because of, there's, there's really good feedback from a lot of folks, you know, in that area. But, but when I go back to those, those pieces and the reasons that staff and planning, you know, approve this, I can't help but think there's something else going on here, like Travis alluded to, that's maybe personal or, I don't know. I, I, I can't see it. And so I, I guess I, I do, I do worry that if, that, that we're basically saying to communities around the city, like if you don't like somebody who wants to build somewhere, like just come out in force, because the council will say no, you know, if, if you come out in force. And I, a- again, I, I don't see it. And I, I'm not persuaded enough by the actual facts of the opposition to, to say no to this. I've already stated that opinion. I'll be voting yes for it. Um, I appreciate so much engagement. I, I guess I, I just don't want to have neighborhoods feel like they can say no to someone as opposed to a project. So, anyway.
I'll, I'll, uh, make a comment and maybe respond in particular to that, uh, point. I, I, um, I was very concerned that there hadn't been a neighborhood meeting and I was pleased to hear that there was one, uh, at least the account that, that, uh, Christie gave us sounded to me like it was a civil meeting. There was good communication. I don't know if everybody feels that way about it, but it, it sounded to me like it was productive. Frankly, I, I kind of expected it to alter some, uh, points of view, but it apparently didn't. Um, but I'm glad it happened. I think that's something that, um, good communication always is a benefit to everyone involved. Um, so I, I'm not convinced, uh, since that meeting took place, that this is, uh, personal animus. Um, I think it's, uh, you know, the, the most, uh, compelling arguments have been pretty clear about being consistent with, with the plan, which of course, as we just discussed with a previous item, sometimes doesn't always work out that way. Um, and for me, the reason to make an exception to, uh, what's already in plan is if there's some sort of compelling reasons for it. Um, and, and frankly, if there were, if maybe if this were a larger project, it would, it would sort of measure the compelling reasons one way or another, a little more clearly. Um, um, but because there's such strong opposition to it, I don't feel I have enough compelling reason to say, you know, this is, uh, so much more important than that, uh, that opinion of the neighborhood. So I, I feel uh, similar to what some of my colleagues have expressed, a desire to, um, respect those opinions, uh, with all due respect to the developer, um, and, and to stick with the, uh, original single family, uh, designation for that property. So I'm, I'm going to vote no. Any other further comment from the council? Counselor Whipple?
Thank you. Um, the first I, I'd like to thank Christie Charles too for her patience and composure and, and everything and, and doing this. Um, like Counselor Hoben, I, I really don't see the harm of this project to the neighborhood. As best as I can tell, it would have a de minimis impact. Right? I, there are so few vacant lots here that if every one of them were turned into twin homes, it would not change the single family character of the neighborhood. Um, I, I, so I, I don't, I don't feel that same existential threat that is communicated to us in all of the emails that we're receiving. Um, but I recognize that the neighbors feel that very strongly. And I also recognize that many of the concerns that they have about parking or overcrowding or things like that are real concerns. But those are pre-existing concerns in the neighborhood. And those are not necessarily concerns that are particular to this project. Um, and as with the, the recommendation from our planning staff, this project would not amplify those concerns. Um, in, in any significant way over the, the approved plan, which is to build a single family home here. The, the general plan that we are, are looking at adopting now, which is on the website, which I'm sure the developer looked at, is one that supports infill where we can do it. Where we can do it. Um, I, and I know that the neighborhood area plan, which refers to general plan, refers to an earlier version. Um, and the, the hard thing is that those are recommendations. They're guidance, they're not hard binding things. Um, but man, I'm impressed that more than 40 people from this neighborhood took the time to, to send an email and, and to be concerned. Um, and I, I've read all of those and I appreciate them, but because I don't see the harm, I would be in favor of this change. I don't know how the votes will, will shake out because I think all of us feel pretty conflicted about this for, for about the same reasons. And it really just is a, a matter of of which value we're, we're going to go for at this point in time. And it doesn't mean that one is necessarily better than the other. It's just that we have to make a decision. But I want to thank you and I also want to, to thank our developer and, and his cute son who wants to live in this neighborhood. And I'm sure that whatever ends up being built there, the neighbors will, will make an effort to be welcoming and gracious and, and pull them in and, and be part of that community.
All right, are we ready for a vote? Okay, I'll call for a vote and I will begin. Uh, I will vote no. Uh, and, right? Is that what I said? I'm so tired.
I'm sorry, folks.
I didn't mean to make.
No means you do not want a, a twin home there.
Yes, I'm gonna vote no. I, sorry, I just wanted, uh, on a serious note, and I'm sorry, that was, I don't mean to ma- make light of this at all. Um, I will say, uh, especially for the developer's sake, uh, one of the reasons why I insisted that I thought it would be the right idea to wait until today is that there, we, if you remember, uh, several counselors were, were absent. One of our counselors had a family emergency in the middle of the meeting. We were down to four people and all it would take was one person to say no and the thing was gonna fail. And that didn't feel fair to me, to the, uh, to the developer. So that was, I want, I'm so glad that we could have all seven of us here and, and I'm glad the developer could be here as well. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that. Anyway, okay, so I'm gonna vote no. Uh, Vice Chair McKay?
No.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
No.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
I have so much power. Just kidding, no. I think you guys knew where I was gonna vote no.
Okay, so that was four against, uh, sorry, three in favor, which were counselors, oh dear, Ellsworth, Whipple and Shipley? And, uh, the rest opposed, so that fails.
May I just say something?
Thank you for your patience and, uh, we wish you a very Merry Christmas, yes.
I, I just want to say that this was a hard vote and the reason it was this close is because all of us really cared and we could see both sides.
There is no objection. We will now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council Meeting by unanimous consent.
There's one more item that was continued that just needs to be.
Oh, yes, sorry. Item number 16 was continued. So if there is no objection, we will now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council Meeting by unanimous consent. Phew, we did it, guys. We got through 2020.